It appears we have a quorum. It's now 8:03. I will call the May 18th, 2022 meeting of the State Board of Education to order. Maureen or Suzanne, who's in control today?
I am.
Maureen, thank you.
Yes.
Could I call upon you to call the roll, please?
Sure thing. Kim Gleason?
Here, good morning.
Morning. Lyle Jepson? Jenna O'Farrell?
Here, good morning.
Tammy Colby?
Good morning, I'm here.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Good morning, here.
Patrick Brown?
Here.
Tom Lovett?
Here.
Angelita Pena? Gabrielle Lucci?
Here.
Val Rolson?
Present.
Secretary French?
Here.
Okay. And Maureen and board members, Lyle Jepson will be with us today. He is running a little bit late. He expects to be here around 8:30. And Angelita will not be with us today as she has exams. So we wish her well in her exams today. So with that, are there any amendments to the agenda? So we have had on item I, we had a last minute cancellation from the contingent from Milton due to an illness. So what I'm going to propose doing, just in anticipation of the possibility of some extended discussion on item G pertaining to the Lincoln withdrawal, I'm going to propose that we, if necessary, if we need extra time, we will leave some time for a break around 9:45. We will then pick up item H with the update from the Mount Mansfield Unified Union District. And then at 10:30, we will return to item G if we need that extra time. So if that works for everybody on the board, that's what I would propose doing. Okay, perfect. So with that, we'll move on to item B, which is public, excuse me, public to be heard. And just for the benefit of members of the public who may be with us, we have made some slight changes to the technology, namely that as members of the public enter the meeting, by default, they will be muted, both audio and video. Members of the public who wished to address the board need to be recognized and then Mission Control will unmute them to be able to participate. So I'm a little unclear on the exact specifics. So at this time, I'm going to call upon Maureen, if you could, for the benefit of members of the public who can listen, but obviously cannot speak, if you could provide some instruction on what they need to do to have themselves be recognized.
Sure thing. If you are participating via the lanky symbol, you need to raise your hand and be recognized by the chair and we'll enable your microphone, let you speak if you're calling in, which it looks like there is one caller, I don't recognize the number, 802-279-4918. You need to dial star five and that will show us that your hands raised. The chair will acknowledge you. We will enable your mic and you will press star six to unmute yourself and then you will speak. And then we will reverse that and mute you again.
Okay. So just to repeat, star five to raise your hand for acknowledgement. And once you're acknowledged, star six to unmute. Okay. So at this time, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I'll just give a one more reminder, it's star five if you wish to be recognized if you're dialed in on the phone. I'm not seeing anybody, so we will keep this item open and return to it before 8:20. But in the meantime, perhaps we can we can move on to some other updates. So why don't we move on to our student update? So Gabrielle, would you mind taking it for us?
All right. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
All right, great. I don't know if I have too much to report this month. I definitely think that the school year is winding down. Of course, there's some stress surrounding final exams. We've had our AP exams, those have passed. And there was definitely a lot of student stress surrounding those. But I think that we've done well and we've rested up from those. And now we're ready for the final push to the end of the school year. And I know that we've hosted two school dances. We've hosted prom and then a spring dance for the underclassmen. And both of those were well attended. And I could definitely see that in the underclassmen dance, I didn't attend the prom, but the underclassmen dance, everyone was having a great time. And I heard some positive things about prom as well. So I'm just glad that there are some things that students are excited about and something, it's something fun for them to do before the school year ends. And I don't know, I don't think I have anything else to update. That's pretty much it.
Great. Questions for, well, I guess questions from the board for Gabrielle. But my first question is, how's your exam schedule looking?
So I had two AP exams that I had to take a few weeks ago and those, I think, went all right. And then I have two final exams that I have to take next week. So one of them I'm looking, I'm thinking will be okay. And the other one, I'm a little nervous about, but I'll study as best I can to, you know, do as well as I can.
Great. Questions, comments from the board? Nope. Okay, well, thank you, Gabrielle, and good luck with your exams next week. So just returning back to item B, public to be heard, one more call for members of the public who wish to address the board. If you wish to be recognized, please press star five if you're dialed in. I'm not seeing anyone. So, oh, I do see somebody. So someone has raised their hand, I believe. Maureen, were you able to unmute them?
Yes, hang on one second.
Good morning, everyone. Hey, thanks for coming back, took some difficulties on this end.
No worries. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, state board. My name is Joe Astic and I am the director of the Maple Hill School, a small independent school in Plainfield, Vermont.
Excellent. So yeah, the floor is yours if you wish to address the board.
Much appreciated. I'll keep it brief. So I just have a question for the board or possibly request. We have with our latest relicensor period, which we started last year and had our full site review, five-year site review. I think wrap up back in January or February. What is unique for us this time? Maple Hill School is a special ed school, grade seven through, or age 12 through 22. And so this time around, we are looking to extend our license to serve fourth through sixth graders. It's been a part of our strategic plan. We're really excited to get started. We have a site, we have staff. We're ready to roll and we are really just awaiting on a timeline for us to get a picture of, you know, what it looks like for this this change in our license and the approval. You know, we are at all best hopes. When we were planning eight months ago, it looked like smooth sailings, you know, for a fall opening. And already have interest from families and districts and local therapists. So we're excited to get that started and realize we can't move forward without that approval. So, you know, we're kind of, it's mid May and feeling a little bit of curiosity and wondering if there's, you know, if there's any information on a timeline. Best guess, I obviously have been reading the updates and very aware of the backlog. And I, you know, thank you for all the work that everybody does with the approval process. Yeah, and I didn't know if it was worth bringing to the board in a way to make this this unique, if this is any unique, more unique than anybody and any other schools that you have going on with the approvals. But I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board and ask for some help or some guidance of, for us to help best prepare to serve fourth through sixth graders in the fall. So kind of that's where we're at as, you know, as a school right now, as Maple Hill.
Okay. Great. Well, I'll just very briefly address that at a high level. I can't, obviously can't speak to the specifics of your school. But in general, the board is aware of a backlog, of the backlog that exists. The approach that the board and the agency are taking is that as existing schools under existing parameters are allowed to continue operating past their standard five-year period without any action. But new schools or schools with substantial change in operations that require a new approval, as I think you're, it sounds like you're aware, do require a new approval. And the approach that the board and the agency are taking is to prioritize those new approvals over the renewals because we realize that, you know, there's clearly an impediment to operating under those new, those new parameters. So the process is the, the agency has to go through its internal process, which if successful culminates in a recommendation that then comes to the state board for action. And then the state board would, we have a subcommittee headed by Tom Lovett that will, you know, essentially review that recommendation and bring back a formal recommendation for the board to act upon. So that's at a high level what the process looks like. So as soon as the agency is prepared to make a recommendation, you know, the board, you know, should be able to address that, you know, without any undue delay.
Great. Any timeline that just, if there is any, once you get that approval in front of you, is that, can that be weeks or multiple months or best guess estimate on that process once that does get in front of you for approval?
Certainly would be weeks because the board only meets monthly. So I would say just to be safe, you know, a few months, you know, certainly not, not six or 12 months, but, you know, I would hazard to say, you know, two to three months would be a reasonable timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, that is it for me. I really just want to say thank you for hearing it, this consideration for this exciting new expansion for our program and given the chance to bring it to your attention this morning. And thanks for all you do. I really appreciate all your work, especially now and all these challenges that have been coming up in the last few years. And thank you for your service to the board. I really am grateful. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Secretary French, anything you wanted to add? I didn't mean to speak for the agency.
No, good morning. This school, we're just chatting offline, is heading towards our finalization. So we'll, we'll have a recommendation on this shortly, so.
Perfect.
Should be, I think, the two-month timeline at the max.
Okay. Good. Wonderful. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? If so, please dial star five to be recognized. Okay. All righty, well, not seeing any other members of the board, I think we can now move on to item C, which is to review and approve the minutes from our April 20th meeting. Would somebody care to offer a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved by Jennifer Samuelson to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2022 meeting. Is there a second? Second. It's been seconded by Tom Lovett. Is there any discussion? Jennifer?
So I think there's just a word missing on page two under preliminary discussion with Lincoln. Sort of toward the end of that paragraph, I think it's the third line from the bottom of that paragraph that says tuition rates, plans and preparations for creation of a new supervisory. I think we just need to insert the word union.
Yes, yeah, that makes sense.
That was the only edit that I saw.
Okay. Kim?
Sure that I should know this by now, but SU would mean that would cover SD as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we probably should say SU slash SSD. Okay. So Jennifer, I would, I'll take that as a, as an amendment then to your original motion. Or if you want to, yeah.
Well, yes, with that friendly edit. I move that we adopt the minutes with that one friendly edit.
Okay. And Tom, you're good to second that? Tom? You're a mute. Actually, Tom may be frozen. I think we've lost Tom in the ether here. Is I?
I can second.
Yes, thank you. So the motion as restated by Jennifer Samuelson has been seconded by Tammy Colby. Is there any further discussion? Already, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the April 20th minutes as amended, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Are there any abstentions? The motion appears to pass unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously and you've approved the minutes of April 20th as amended. That now brings us to item D, board announcements. Yes, Jennifer?
Thanks. Just to sort of tie off any loose ends, I just wanted to say that the rule 2200 series was approved by Elkar. So all provisions that are outside of Act 173 became effective on May 10th. And then all of the provisions that pertain to Act 173 will go through, I believe it's July 1st, 2023.
Correct, yep. Wonderful. Again, congratulations. A lot of hard work that many people put into that, so thank you.
Thanks.
Kim?
Just wanted to make folks aware that Angelita's last meeting will be in the next meeting. And so expect some outreach probably from Jennifer and myself to, we're coordinating to honor her and look for feedback from folks to craft a resolution, among other things. So you'll hear from us and think a way to honor and thank her for her service.
Wonderful. Thank you both for helping with that. Any other board announcements? Okay. The chair does have one just piece of business. So there's been some correspondence with with an independent school in Ludlow, I think it's the Black River Expeditionary School, which I don't know, I think you've all been copied on. We've gone back and forth a few times and similar to the public comment we just received, they have been making inquiries about the, the status of their application to become an approved independent school. So I have, I have pointed them to the process outlined in our rules. They've, you know, they're asking for us to sort of expedite, you know, their approval. But, you know, until we actually have a recommendation from the agency, it's by our rules is, you know, outside our purview. So I just want to make sure that you're all aware of that. And I believe I've copied you on all that correspondence. So, okay. Any other board announcements? Okay. So with that, I think we can, Donna, if you're with us, I think we could move to item F. And, and I think, Donna, if you wouldn't mind sort of walking through, actually before, do we have you, Donna?
I don't see Donna, but I will chat her and see where she's at.
Okay. Well, we're waiting for Donna to join us. Kim and I can can sort of provide a brief update on, on H 727. And then Donna has prepared an excellent summary of of the bill, which you've all received and has been posted on our website. So the, you know, the short version is that 727, which we've talked about over the last few meetings, is a major overhaul of Chapter 11. In Title 16, Chapter 11 covers the unification of school districts and also apropos to the conversation we'll have on our next, at our next agenda item, the process for communities to withdraw from unified school districts. So a lot of, a lot of work went into this bill initially in the House and then it moved over to the Senate. The Senate spent several weeks working on this. They arrived at a slightly different version. And then the bill went back over to the House. The two bodies decided to form what's known as a conference committee, which is a committee of three members from the House, three members from the Senate that come together and try to strike a compromise on the bill. They did so, they reached compromise middle of last week. Things happened very quickly and they, the House and the Senate voted out the final product, I believe on Wednesday. If I, my days are all a little bit mixed up, but I believe it was Wednesday if I'm not mistaken. So that bill is being prepared for, it's going through the engrossment process and being prepared to to be transmitted to the governor for his consideration for potential signature. So that's, that's the kind of the high-level update on the bill. Kim, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add that, you know, having held from a unified school district, it was very difficult to have found where the law applied to you. So in addition to it outlining what's necessary to unify and what's necessary to dissolve, it provides the roadmap for how you find yourself in the law as a unified school district. It had been crafted so many years ago when it was really about union high school. And if you were a union K, pre-K 12, you were piecing together from SU law and from, you know, unified high school-ish law to find yourself in the law to help guide your governance and often, you know, reaching out to ensure that you were interpreting this patchwork properly. So I think this major override overhaul of Chapter 11 has been handled in pieces previously through various session law that would sunset awaiting this update of Chapter 11. And I think the field where we are seeing so many more unified school districts will find themselves quite happy to know where they're looking in law for what, you know, governs their, their body. So parts of it were controversial as, as we've seen and we understand because we are on the receiving end of some of the challenge with what was missing in that law. But well, aside from that, it is a big body of work that has been contemplated for many years and is going to be welcomed by the field. Yeah. And it's whole. These other pieces, you know, you're going to get any number of opinions on them. But those, I think, are actually, while they are taking up the majority of the time and attention, they are probably less or going to have fewer applications than the broader rewrite of Chapter 11 will. And the impact will be bigger for those just looking to have it govern their work.
And I think with respect to the withdrawal process, this legislation, you know, should it be signed into law, I think is a huge improvement over what we've been dealing with. And as Kim mentioned, you know, the state board has been sort of on the receiving end and having to try to help folks navigate through a very, a very, some very muddy waters and, and, you know, the law, you know, is 50-plus years old. There really wasn't much, if any, use of the law that anybody could find. So there wasn't a clear, there wasn't a clear roadmap that we could look to. And I think, you know, as evident as we have gone through some of these processes, you know, we've identified a number of gaps. The most, one of the most obvious ones was, you know, we don't even, it's not entirely clear who is actually, you know, representing or speaking on behalf of the withdrawing entity. That was, I think, you know, one of the first challenges that, you know, we've had to deal with. And so this, this new process, I think, you know, provides much-needed clarity for everyone's, everyone's benefit, so.
Oliver, if I can add two, I think what we had sought all along from the beginning was to see how best to provide a somewhat parallel analysis that goes into unification to a process for withdrawal. That we were similar to the sort of rationale for the thoughtful study that goes into unification. The, that was intended, you know, to ensure success in those unified ventures and mergers of districts and schools coming together and telling each other. So the rationale for what might be sought in a withdrawal was looking to parallel that such that when we are in a position to make a decision, we are hopeful that the analysis has set up these communities and students for success in their withdrawal. And I think that we did our best to keep that at the center of what we were seeking. I think it was, for me, an enlightening legislative process because I've not been as close to it as Oliver has. And how these huge bodies of work become law is, it brings a lot of voice to the conversation. And I think consequently, I think on an overarching manner, this law achieved that or what will be law achieved that high level. or what will be law achieved that high level support for what we're trying to do, which is to ensure we are able to have the tools to approve communities moving forward with their desires through a lens that has had analysis that sets them up for success. So I hope I got that right, Oliver. But that was sort of my stand back from it and what I experienced of the process, I think we were able to keep that intention somewhat centered and let the legislative process do what it will.
Yep. No, I take overall a huge, huge improvement over what we, we've been struggling with. Maureen, any, any luck with Donna?
I, I've been on.
Oh, you are? Oh, wonderful. Sorry.
I've been listening.
Oh, wonderful. Donna, so yeah, if you wouldn't mind just walking the board through at a high level, your, your memo and some of the highlights of 727, that would be much appreciated.
Sure. Sections one through three are the bulk of the document and almost all of that is non-controversial. It was just as, as Kim was saying, it was just reorganizing, rewriting, filling in the blanks, trying to make the day-to-day operations in particular, because that's what's, that's what's pertinent now, but also the creation and the dissolution. It was trying to make it simpler for people to find what they need. It's simple to find what applied to them because there are so many different ways that a Union School District can be created and can be, can be constituted. So, you know, most of this is existing law or existing practice. Much of it is repeated because it's set up so that the same information is put forward twice, once for unified Union School Districts and once for Union High School, Union Elementary School Districts, because there are little things that are different between the two. And, and those little things are significant in terms of, for example, the, the person to whom you bring your petition to, to be a candidate for the school board. Those kinds of things are different. And rather than trying to go back and forth in a single statute saying, well, if you're this, do it this way, if you're this, do it another way, it's set up so that it was repeat, the same concepts were repeated, but, but they're, they apply just to the particular district. The two pieces that are different, in a, in a significantly different in a policy way are the withdrawal statutes and 724 and 725. And then also the default that ballots will be co-mingled before counting in a unified Union School District with a couple of exceptions. So that is most of the bill. But most of the time on the bill in discussions was spent on Sections four through seven, which were the, the four towns that have started some steps towards withdrawal process. And there were four separate sections because each one is in a different stage of the process and needed to be, needed to be addressed differently. And I did go ahead, even though this, even though the bill itself doesn't identify that Section four relates to Ripton, that Section five relates to Stowe, et cetera, the legislators were so open about discussing, well, is this the Stowe section we're talking about now? Is this the Ripton section we're talking about now? That I didn't feel that it was inappropriate to give you a clue into that as well. So in the, in the summary that I prepared, it does identify which, which district it applies to. And the way that the, the criteria for whether or not a particular section applies to a district, the way in each case that it's written, there, there are, at this point, there are no other districts that will fall under any of these four session, pieces of session law.
Sorry, oh yeah, sorry to interrupt Donna, but just to be very clear, even though, you know, we're using the shorthand of identifying the towns that are, that are impacted under the specified criteria, the, the actual legislation does not name the towns and purposely does not. It, it identifies a set of criteria that needs to be fulfilled to fall within the terms of that particular section. Am I correct?
Correct. And at the time that they were originally written, which was early in the session, there was the potential that there could be more districts that would fit within those, those listed criteria. At this point, it's too late in the game for anyone else to fall within any of them. So Section eight is a temporary moratorium on Union School Building closures. It's a two-year moratorium. Closures are defined as if more than a majority of the grades are, are closed, are moved elsewhere. There are some exceptions. The legislature tried to be sensitive to the fact that there might be situations in which closures were in process or closures would be necessary, for example, if a, if a building is unsafe. But I've already received a call about a situation that doesn't seem to fit within the exceptions and they're trying to figure out how they deal with the situation. So it's, it's just the way it always is. The, the legislature does its best to anticipate, but if it doesn't have the information, it can't anticipate everything. Section nine is, is a report by the agency on, on a number of listed questions regarding school closures in, in Union School Districts. And the report is, reports are generally due in January, but because the moratorium is for two years, the, they gave the agency a little bit more time for it and it's not due until September 1 of '23. Section 10 is an annual report on Union School Withdrawal. And it was written at a time, yes, I'm 90, I'm totally sure. It was, it was inserted by the Senate Education Committee at a time when they were thinking that it would be the secretary who would be making a decisions regarding withdrawals and then there would be an appeal process to the state board. And so, and, and when all of that changed around and it's no longer the secretary making a decision, the, the annual report language wasn't changed. So it still says that the agency files this annual report. My guess is that, that whoever is secretary at the time will, will want to consult with the state board since the state board is going to be more involved in it than, than the secretary or the agency will be. Sections 11 and 12 are regarding employee transition. There is a real need for some continuity, both for employees and for the, for the school boards and the school districts of, of, when there is a withdrawal. The, the problem that would arise is that a, if there is a school building, for example, that, that operates K through six in a unified Union School District, all of those employees prior to merger, I mean, excuse me, prior to withdrawal are employees at the Union School District and they are operating under a collectively bargained agreement. When a new entity is created, a town school district that now is the, the, who is responsible for this elementary school, even if those very, very same individuals are employed, there is no collective, there is not automatically a collectively bargained agreement. There is no agreement at all, which means that a, a new school district such as Ripton without this language would be required to negotiate individually with every employee of the school building until a collectively bargained agreement could be developed. So this, this language takes care of that problem and it, and it's very similar to the language that was put in place in connection with mergers. And it, it sets certain parameters for when the negotiations must occur. And if, and in, if agreements aren't reached by a certain period of time, then the collectively bargained agreement for the previous year for the Union School District will apply in the case of the new town school district. So it gives the continuity and, and frankly, it makes it simpler for the, the school board to, to be able to find its employees and, and enter into agreements with its employees. And then finally, the, the effective date is on passage. It's currently, the last I checked, it was not even the, the most current version, the approved version wasn't even listed as a separate version on the website. So it's still with the, with the editors at Legislative Council, but then it'll be sent over to the governor and as far as I know, the governor intends to sign it.
Donna, Kim has a question?
Sure.
Thanks, Donna. With respect to the employee transition, and I'm just sort of again harkening back to the unification we went through, bringing those contracts together and seniority lists together was challenging. And I'm wanting to just make sure I'm understanding, this doesn't, this section of this law doesn't speak to seniority or retaining seniority. So it provides the contract that could be entered into because it's the same as what was there, but employee decision-making on where they would continue to be employed by the Union School District or the newly formed separate district may be impacted by their decisions with respect to the seniority they have in their current employer. Am I understanding that correctly? Like, we should not be presuming by this law that the very same people serving in that building would choose to continue to serve?
Correct. If, if those people were, were of a significant seniority, any one of them could say, you know what, I'd really rather stay with the UUSD, can you put me in a different building? And that.
And that would defer to the seniority list and those who choose to remain with the separated district would, the seniority would be that which applies only within that building?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding. There is a provision that says that if they need to work out an MOU to help with seniority issues, that that's something that can be negotiated.
Meaning that even though it would be separate contacts, they may have an opportunity to return to the USD?
No, no, not that. I mean, they would only be, but, but just if there are seniority issues that become an issue in the transfer, then that's something that they can, they can negotiate and have as an MOU. Also, it would mean that any new employees that come in would come in under that existing negotiated agreement, unless they're able to, to reach a new negotiated agreement.
Right. No, I understand. That was, that was, that was a big body of work and I know it takes a lot of time. So I think this would be hopeful. I just wanted to clarify that those choosing to move, even if the contract is taken care of, because this offers that, are doing so at, I guess, risk of their loss of seniority in the Union School District. And I think that's a nuance that if you haven't lived it, you might not appreciate. So I just wanted to.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. You're saying if someone chooses to stay at the building.
Yep.
But then in a year or two decides to go back to the UUSD, they would not maintain the place that they had in seniority. I, I believe that that's true.
Okay, thank you. I know that that's nuanced and I apologize if it's in the weeds, but I think.
And I'm, and I'm not an expert in, in labor law, but I believe that that's true.
Yeah. And I, and I think, I just think it's important to point out, and if you haven't lived it, it might not occurred of folks to consider that. I think that maybe, that may have an impact on who chooses to stay within the building of a separated newly formed district. And I think it's a nuance that I am appreciative, the, the platform by virtue of a contract is there because that is its own very difficult challenge. But the seniority matter is, I think, a separate issue not handled by this because it strikes me that it would be lost if they were to, or at least their ability to return, as far as I can tell, to a Union School District. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
Thanks. Donna, I had a couple of questions about Sections four through seven. And so for each one of those sections, I mean, they're sort of shorthand referred to by town, but is my understanding correct that they were sort of crafted very, very specifically so that the definition fit exactly one unique fat, set of factual circumstances?
There.
So if, for any one of those sections, if the factual circumstances of that particular town change, what happens? Does, do these new proposed changes that have yet to be signed into law, do they no longer apply to that town who has somehow, you know, factually changed something so that is no longer consistent with the definition?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay. So then can you just kind of briefly, sort of high level, like what happens then if, any of these towns kind of fall outside of that definition? Like what would be the, the difference between, like if they proceed with their withdrawal?
I think it would depend upon the, it would depend upon the individual, which section you're talking about.
Okay.
Um, I think the requirements of the section would no longer be required, the, any, any additional, I can't think of a good word for it, any additional, not rights, but any additional options that were available, that aren't available under normal law, wouldn't be available under normal law. You would need to, this does lay out a, this does lay out a path that makes sense under the current law. There's a, there's a funny noise.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the garbage truck is going by.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So the Sections four through seven do lay out a, a process that is very similar to the process that you've had to create in order to, to make it work under the, under what's now, or soon will be the former 724. So the process really won't be that much different as much as the timing might be different. But for example, the, the kind, the requirements that are there that I said would no longer apply, for example, to, to make a showing of having developed a plan that would, would get a district to the point where it, it could adequately educate its children in a, in a way that meets education quality standards. Whether it shows it to you or not, you know, showing it to you would be something that's required by, by one of the sections. But whether it's shown to you or not, that's something that they're going to need to do to be successful anyway, that level of detail that is asked for. So as a practical matter, if a district wants to be successful, I don't know that there would be that much different in what it needs to do. Did that make sense? I'm having a hard time because each of the four is different slightly, but.
Well, and I guess, I mean, like I know that Lincoln is the next thing on our agenda and I know that they are keen to go forward with their withdrawal process, which then, you know, by definition, if, if we grant their withdrawal today, that sort of fixes them in the old version of 724 because this is, like, the way I'm reading this is these amendments that have been put together. It's kind of an either or thing, like either you fit the definition or you don't. And if you don't fit the definition anymore because, you know, they've proceeded with their withdrawal, then they can't then avail themselves of the additional provisions that are being proposed in amended 724. Is that correct?
That, that would be my understanding. And I think that we would just need to make sure, I haven't gone through, but we would just make, okay, yes, okay. I was just looking to see, for example, with Section six, which is the Lincoln provision, that they would no longer, if the state board did take action, then it would no longer apply, that section would no longer apply pursuant to Section six subdivision A four. So you're right. So you would be kind of muddling along with the timeframe that you developed when you were doing earlier, rather than following this timeframe. And you're right, the additional provisions would not apply.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Kim?
And to clarify, we would. And to clarify, we would have no authority by virtue of motion to, to reverse a vote of the electorate. The law offers that in the proposed legislation or the, as approved by House and Senate legislation. I guess that's the proverbial off ramp. And there's no motion we can make in acting today that allows for this body to reverse a vote of the electorate without the provision that's offered in law. Is that true?
Correct. There would be no way that you could do that. If if in the future Lincoln wished to, 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 not to withdraw, it would need to go through the process in 721 where a district joins an existing unified Union School District.
Thank you. That's what I was understanding. And I, and I, I'm sure I'm going to have other questions when we get to the more specific conversation ahead of us. But I think that's important to understand for any of these session law components, that we, we don't have that authority absent that section of session law.
Correct.
And I, and I, Kim, I appreciate you bringing that that up. And I I would remind board members that we sought and received an informal opinion from the Attorney General's Office specific to the Stowe situation. But that, that memo that we received from the Attorney General's Office also spoke more broadly to the limits of our authority. And there's very clear case law that make, you know, makes it clear that our authority is, is limited to what has been expressly authorized by the General Assembly. We can't go off into the wilderness and, and act by fiat.
May I just add one little twist to that? You, you've been forced because the existing 724 is so deficient and, and does things that are contrary to each other. You've been forced into a situation where you've had to be creative to figure out how to make it work for these districts that wanted to withdraw. But that's distinct from choosing to make a, a motion to, to, to do something that is not otherwise allowed in law. There, you know, there is a real difference between those two actions.
We, we, we've done our level best to bring order to chaos in the Wild West. But that, Donna, I think you're absolutely right. That's very different than us going off and clearly acting in a way that is, has not been permitted by the General Assembly. And I would, you know, further add that, you know, the, the legislature spent a great deal of time fashioning these pieces of session law, very carefully crafting the, the defining criteria. If they had intended for these provisions to apply more broadly, one would think that they would have written the law in such a way to give it that effect. So, any other questions? We have about three minutes left before our next agenda item. Uh, Kim.
Donna, I think I'm just curious because as closely as I've followed this and done my best to support Oliver's work and your work on this, the closure definition and that which is sort of falling outside of this, I'm just wondering, and you, you don't need to, you could offer the specifics of what falls outside of what they've tried to anticipate in this. What, what is the recourse for, I guess, more importantly, what would be the recourse for those that are mutually deciding that this makes sense, but it falls outside of that and is stuck with this temporary moratorium? Is it like another round of session law in January or?
Donna, you're on mute.
Sorry, I don't feel comfortable giving you the specifics. It's something that I've spoken with their attorney about. And I think that at least at this point, I think it's just between us. But I think that another round of session law is possibly another answer. It's all, it's also possible that there is a way to make this work. But again, I, I, I don't know what they're going to, to do.
Thank you. I was just trying to consider mechanics and budget season. So, thanks.
Wonderful. Well.
And if there's one more thing, Oliver, I think that it might be important just to frame of reference around the temporary moratorium. What was occurring to legislators as I was listening was that they were seeing many of these withdrawal requests to hell from the fear of school closure and felt as though a cooling off period on the closures created space for thoughtful process. And so I just thought it might be helpful for that perspective. And if you think I'm capturing or characterizing that wrong, Oliver, definitely, you know, correct or offer more color commentary here. I, that was what I was hearing, and I think it was their good intention to create that space.
No, I, Kim, Kim, I would agree. And I think, you know, it's been, I think it's fair to say, I think, you know, and the folks from Lincoln can correct us if we're, we're wrong. But I think what we've heard is that these withdrawal actions, you know, specific to Addison County, the, the, the origins of them all stem from a concern around school closure. And one of the, I think, the, the aha moments, and at least one of the legislative committees, was that it, it seems like folks are using the wrong tool to solve, you know, this issue. So that's how this, this moratorium came about. So, you know, we're, we're sort of on the receiving end of some pretty substantial changes in, in governance to solve, you know, a, a, a slightly different set of concerns. And, and I think it's, it's born out of a frustration at the local level that there isn't a more direct approach or they feel somehow disenfranchised from some more direct approach to dealing with what is really the concern, which is the potential closure of their, their local school.
And I think the moratorium also offers, and the report, I think we're, we're partnered to offer a thoughtful, I think it sounded as though legislators were looking there for there to be a thoughtful sort of almost rubric approach to decisions regarding school closure so that that might be articulated overtly throughout, you know, and applied uniformly as districts later take that information or the law, the legislators take that information and create law around guardrails for withdrawals, for instance. I'm not sure that's, I don't know that that's necessarily anticipated. But that was what I understood of their intention with the report. Let's see what's happening around the withdrawals. Let's see what's, have a thoughtful conversation about what goes into decision making regarding closures. Give that a couple of years to be developed in a thoughtful way and be informed by the field. And perhaps that later becomes law if necessary or some other version of guidance. So those pieces work together.
Yeah, I, I, I heard the same thing. Okay, so that brings us to item G, which is the Lincoln withdrawal. So let me start by asking folks from Lincoln to recognize. And I see one hand going up. So as, if you could be recognized by pressing star five, if you're on the phone or raising your hand, and then mission control will allow you to unmute yourselves. So as you unmute yourself, if you could start by just identifying yourselves so we can be clear who we have with us today. So I'm seeing somebody, Lincoln, and then I'm seeing Ron Shems.
Okay, so if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Paul Forlensa. I'm on the Lincoln Select Board. I'm also the Select Board liaison to the Save Community Schools Group, some of whom are here. We want to thank you for having us here and the work that has gone on in the last month to get us here. So to my right is Jim Warnock.
Yep.
Who is Jeannie Alberts. Andrew First. To my left is Aaron Warnock, then Owen McLean. And on the phone, we have Tori Riley, who's the principal of the Lincoln School. And we have Ron Sheems, who is the town attorney. Owen is the attorney for Save Community Schools. And we wanted to thank you for the motion and let you know right up front that we support the draft motion that we've seen.
So, Mr., is it Shems or Shames? Want to make sure I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
It, it's Shems.
Shems, okay, thank you. That's what I thought. So I see we have you as well. Okay. So, so we have two attorneys. So I'd like just a little bit of housekeeping here. I want to get a little bit of clarity on sort of who's who and who's representing whom. So we have attorney Owen McLean and attorney Ron Shems. So the most recent letter that I've received from Mr., Mr. McLean, dated yesterday, May 17th, the letter stated that, quote, it, this letter is submitted on behalf of both the Town of Lincoln and Save Community Schools. So my first question is, because, Mr. Shems, we've also received correspondence from you indicating that you're representing the town. So my question for Mr. McLean is, can you clarify, are you representing the Save Community Schools Group and the Town of Lincoln?
No, thank you for the question. Mr. Shems and I discussed our correspondence before we sent it in. There, there really is no space between the Town of Lincoln and the Save Community Schools Group with respect to their positions on withdrawal or, or, or any of the issues pending in front of the board. I, I think Attorney Shems will agree with me on that. And so he asked me to indicate that that was also on behalf of the town in advance and had reviewed a draft of it.
That's correct, Cheryl Olson. We worked on the letter together, the, the town and Save Community Schools. And so I had asked Owen to indicate that it's on both our behalves.
Okay, great, thank you. I, I only saw the one signature on the letter, so that wasn't, wasn't particularly clear. So I appreciate you clarifying that. And I just, you know, for the record, want to point out, and I, you know, as, as Donna Russo Savage indicated, you know, existing law is woefully deficient in many, many ways, which I, I think we perhaps would all agree on. And, and one of the key deficiencies is it doesn't really, the process in 724 doesn't really identify who the parties are. So it is a little bit of the Wild West in terms of identifying who, whom actually is authorized to speak. So the board has, in our attempt to navigate through this sort of subtle mess, we are, we're sort of identifying folks as the self-selected representatives because they are the folks who have come to the forefront. Thus far, we've not heard from anyone else. So we're, we're sort of relying on people to self-identify as the spokespeople in, in the absence of some, something more specific in, in the statute. So. By the way, I'm getting some echo from somebody on the line. So if you, if you're not speaking, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, that would be great. Thank you. So as far as the, so the, Mr. Forlensa, if you could mute, thank you. So as far as the process going, going forward today, we, we, at our last meeting in May, the state board heard from representatives from Lincoln. We received some information, a fair amount of information. But, you know, we, there were certainly some gaps in the, the information. As an example, some of the information around capacity and evidence of capacity in nearby schools, that, that information was, was not complete. We did receive yesterday from Mr. McLean some further evidence that, that provides definitely some more information than we had received before our April meeting. We, as I think you know, under current law, there is no timeline established for the board to, to complete its process. So I just want to point out that we have put this item on today's agenda at the request of the self-selected representatives from Lincoln through their, through their attorneys. And essentially, what you're asking for is for the board to expedite its review process, which is what we are poised to do today. We've made time to do that. We've not had very much time to review material. Again, some of this material, we only received late yesterday afternoon. And I know several, I know board members, including myself, were up late last night reviewing that material. So I just want to point out that you are requesting the board to expedite its review. The board is not under any obligation under current statute to do so. We are agreeing to put this on the calendar today. I'm not guaranteeing a, a particular outcome. So I just want to sort of preface our discussion with that. I also want to make it very clear that the board is cognizant of, of legislation that is likely to come into force in the not-too-distant future. And by I wouldn't want to create the appearance that the board was, on its own motion, expediting this process under current law as a way of circumventing the intention of the legislature specifically with respect to section six of H 727. The board is only putting, because by doing so, as Ms. Russo Savage has indicated, if the board takes action, the folks in Lincoln are going to be deprived of special privileges that would otherwise be granted as part of 727. So the board, it would not be advisable for the board to rush into this and try to conclude this process on its own motion and effectively eliminate the opportunity for, for Lincoln to take advantage of those special privileges in, in 727. So I just want to be very, very clear that we are putting this on the agenda at the request of Lincoln through its attorneys. And we are going to be considering this matter under current law, not future law, current law. And that is the basis of the draft motion that the agency has drafted at, at our request. So before we go any further, is that clear to, to everybody, Mr. Shems and Mr. McLean?
Yes, it is. You know, we.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd be happy to have Paul Forlensa speak to that in more detail. But the Town of Lincoln has committed to a process. We're well underway under a process. We've made significant investments under the process. There's a timeline that Paul submitted to the board this morning that indicates the, the steps and why we're somewhat in a tight timeframe in order to meet all the requirements. And, you know, I, I invite Paul or Owen to, to speak more of that.
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl Olson.
Of course.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for that summary. I think that's helpful. And, you know, we certainly agree that Lincoln is asking the board to take action under current law. And we understand that if the board were to approve Lincoln's withdrawal as drafted in the draft motion that was distributed yesterday, that we would then proceed without the process contemplated by Section 6. One point of clarification, however, it's my understanding that by taking action under the existing statute, that means approving the withdrawal. If the board were to find or determine that it did not have sufficient information, that would not constitute taking action. That would be a decision not to take action. And so just to be clear, as I stated in my letter yesterday to the board, we are not asking for expedited review to the extent that the board feels that would open the door for it to take action and deny Lincoln's withdrawal and also remove Lincoln from the specific provisions of Section 6 of H 727. And so in our view, the only action to be taken today, if any, is to approve Lincoln's withdrawal. Any other decision, either to defer action in order for Lincoln to provide additional information or for any other reason, would not constitute taking action today.
Thank you. So also, another point of clarification, Mr. McLean, you had submitted yesterday a proposed order that, that essentially would have had the board granting the special provisions contemplated in Section 6 of 727, but under our authority under existing law. And I indicated to you yesterday that I did not think that was, that would not be legal. And we've provided the motion that Ms. Russo-Savage has put together. Would you, do you concur, based on the discussions that we've had, that we do not have the authority to grant approval with those additional provisions in 727 today? Do you concur with that now?
Yeah, thank you. I found your correspondence on that yesterday and to be very thoughtful. And I also found your May 13 correspondence about the pragmatism and the questions that Lincoln faces going forward, to be thoughtful and indeed practical. Our attempt at drafting a motion was really designed, Chair Olson, to meet you halfway on what we considered to be the need to withdraw now as a practical matter in order to have a successful withdrawal and your clear interest that, as expressed in the May 13 correspondence, that you really felt that that was a practical way forward. I would hesitate to provide a legal memorandum on the spot as to whether or not the board has the authority or not, legal authority, to condition withdrawal as we proposed. I think it's a very nuanced legal question. It is clearly a benefit that's contemplated by the legislature. Lincoln is clearly entitled to application of the existing law as well. And so in some respect, Lincoln's rights have vested under current statute and it's entitled to proceed. But I guess I'd frame it this way, that that was our attempt to meet you halfway in order to get this across the finish line in a reasonable fashion. As a practical matter, I think, as noted by other board members this morning, you know, the plan, the development of the plan, and all of the experts from Lincoln that have been working on this are clearly going to follow a process that includes development of a plan. And we're looking forward to working with the SBE on a successful withdrawal as we move forward. Just to be clear, we entirely support approval of the withdrawal today based on the motion that's been drafted by the agency, which does not contain the condition regarding following process under H 727. So I guess I would say I definitely agree that the board has the authority to authorize the withdrawal without that condition, if that makes sense.
Okay, yes, it does. Thank you. All righty, so I think, I think we, so can I see your hands up? I'll come to you in one minute. But so just what we're going to do now, I just want to make sure that everybody's absolutely clear how we're moving forward. So we're going to move forward under current law today. And we will, you know, consider the evidence that's been submitted. And the board will have an opportunity to ask some questions of you. And so I think what I'll do at this time is, I'd like to get the motion on the table. And we'll have an opportunity to ask, have discussion and ask questions. We'll do that during consideration of the motion. So, Kim? You're muted.
Oliver, I'm wondering, as a sort of point of order, could we pause on introducing the motion, invite Lincoln to share with us their additional information? And frankly, if there was additional information this morning, I didn't get it. I don't know if others did. So have them make their final clarifying information to our board that we had asked for last time and whatever additional information may have come this morning, since, again, it was coming in fast and furious last night and we needed, I think, some time. So I don't know if it would be possible that we let them finish their pitch and that we discuss the motion or, you know, whatever the draft was, because, again, that came in late last night before anybody introduces that as a motion for a second and consideration. If that's okay, that feels better, that we could approach it better informed.
Either way works. So I'm happy to do that. So let's, so why don't we do this now? We'll, I'll invite board members to pose questions. We've obviously had the pitch before. We've received additional supplementary information. So at this time, I'll turn it over to board members to ask their questions. So Tammy, why don't I start with you? And then, Kim, if you want to take the next one?
Sure. Good morning. Thank you, Councilwoman McLean, for joining us this morning. I wanted to follow up on your correspondence as the State Board last week that noted that the key consideration for the board is a finding that students in Lincoln are going to be able to attend a school that's in compliance with the rules adopted by the State Board pertaining to educational programs. At our last meeting, representatives from Lincoln shared information with us that documented the capacity of nearby schools to continue to accept Lincoln students in grades seven through 12. But I see as of yesterday, I think it was yesterday, it's been a lot of moving pieces here, that representatives from Lincoln shared with us new information on alternatives for students in grades K through six to attend neighboring schools in the event that the newly constituted Lincoln School District would be unable to maintain an elementary school. It would be really helpful for me to better understand what was submitted to the board yesterday, particularly if you could walk us through the evidence and assurances that Lincoln School District has that its students, particularly in grades K through six, will have to be able to attend a school that meets State Board rules, particularly if it turns out to be the case that Lincoln cannot stand up or sustain its own elementary school. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll just speak to where we stand on what was submitted and then turn it over to somebody that has more knowledge about it specifically. But as I stated in my correspondence with the board several days ago, at the last meeting of the SBE, there was discussion and testimony regarding the information that was submitted in the presentation. The presentation from Lincoln identified its plan to operate a K through six school and had set forth a table with some information confirming that students in seven through 12 would have a place to attend school. In advance of the last board meeting in April, the folks from Lincoln also prepared information in connection with all students having the ability to attend school in another nearby school. And that was testified to at the last meeting. And I think what occurred was that there was, folks, the meeting addressed a variety of other issues that are not germane to what we view as the central question before the board under Section 724(c). However, I think that it kind of got clouded in the discussion of other things during that meeting. What we submitted yesterday was in response to Chairman Olson's email on May 13th identifying his request to have that information, the same information we submitted to the board at the last meeting in writing. And so what we've submitted is a table that identifies the nearby schools and their availability to have all Lincoln students from K through 12 attend nearby schools. And it's supported by subsequent pages that identify written correspondence from the folks at those schools. So Jeannie Alberts is here to, I think, can add more color to that. But I believe that's the sort of procedural posture, as it will, with respect to the evidence about the critical standard under 724, which is, will the Lincoln students have a place to attend school? And the resounding answer to that is yes.
Yeah, the only, I don't really have anything else to add unless you have questions about it, because Owen covered it thoroughly, that the difference between the evidence we provided in April and what has been subsequently offered is just written assurances from the superintendents in the nearby districts. And that's part of the exhibit that we submitted. But if there's further information that would be helpful, we have to answer that.
Chair Olson, if I may, just a follow-up question. Has the group that's come together, that is sort of working on this, has there been a discussion among the group or some agreement among the group where the group now understands that if Lincoln cannot stand up or sustain its own elementary school, that the district may be put in a position of needing to tuition out all of their students in grades K through 12?
Yes, I think I'd turn, I think I'll ask Jim Warnock to answer that question in more depth. But I think from my understanding, that has been considered thoroughly and the consequences of it have been studied. And there is a consensus that that is, that all understand that that is a, that is not the goal and it's certainly not the intended outcome. But I think the group is fully aware of that as a possibility, as it will.
Yeah, and thank you for the question, Tammy. It's an important one. And over the nearly two years that this group has been working tirelessly, that has always been in the forefront of our consciousness. We, in fact, and the informational meetings that we did prior to the town vote and the informational meetings we did in other towns in Addison County prior to the ratification votes, we were extremely conscious of being transparent, particularly with our Lincoln neighbors and residents, as to what the consequence could be conceivably if this were not a sustainable venture. So we have always been aware of that and have worked really, really hard to be forthcoming with our neighbors and our community. And consequently, it was an enormous affirmation on the part of the Town of Lincoln to get the overwhelming three-to-one vote that we did, knowing that townspeople were fully aware of the entire picture that you've just, again, raised in your question. So I'm speaking to assure you and the other board members that we are very, very aware of that.
Okay. Kim and then Lyle?
Thank you. I think this is an observation, not the questions that I have, but I think it's relevant to follow up on Tammy's questions in line of thinking that I wonder to what extent the community anticipates or has considered the cost to have need to tuition without then sort of voice and authority on how districts are run. So that's really just an observation. And that would be if the community, Lincoln were not able to sustain its operation of its building as a standalone school district. I think, though, now to sort of my line of question and thinking, and I want to sort of acknowledge that the legislation sort of moved fast and furiously at the end, but I want to point to a couple of things that have me curious. The final approved by both bodies language offered the opportunity for those session law folks to move their operational date from the 23rd to the 24th. And there had been some conversation in your earlier presentations about partnering with Ripton. And I think they would retain that right to choose an operational date that is later. And by virtue of action today, if that were to happen, that would no longer be available. And I wonder if that's been contemplated, that disconnect?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think, I guess I think our group would put it this way. We are interested in working with Ripton toward a viable SU. We've articulated that to the board. But I think it also starts to distract the discussion about Lincoln's withdrawal under the current statute from where it needs to be. As I stated in our correspondence prior, we do not feel that Lincoln's successful negotiation of an SU with Ripton is relevant to the board's withdrawal, approval of Lincoln. And we therefore don't see sort of how it fits into the discussion to the extent that Ripton makes a decision to defer its operational date to 20, out a year under the new statute and how Ripton reads the new statute and whether Ripton agrees that the so-called section that's applicable to Ripton is enforceable. I just don't know the answer to any of those questions, given the timing. And we just haven't engaged with Ripton on those specific legal questions. But I guess. But I guess, I guess the long and short of my answer to that question anyway is that whether or not Lincoln ultimately negotiates a successful SU in collaboration, really, with the state board, given its authority and obligations under Section 261 of Title 16. You know, those are sort of questions that I think are ones that we are fully ready to get around when we have been granted withdrawal and can elect a school board and begin to have those real discussions about how the rubber hits the road on the SU designations.
So, so Kim and other board members, I would caution, let's not introduce concepts from the new law. We've already sort of, I think, established we're moving forward with a discussion under current law and the folks from Lincoln are well aware of the potential, you know, they have their own counsel and I think we need to rely on counsel to advise them on potential risks.
Yeah, I think, Oliver, though, important to a sustainable future for that school is consideration of options. And I think it's reasonable if we're, if it's okay, I'd like to go through a couple of other, you don't have to respond to them, they don't have to respond to them, but we just ask them for their legal opinion on whether or not they agree that we don't have the authority to give them an off-ramp under current law. And so if it's okay, I'd just like to point to a few of the areas that in a cost benefit analysis, before we even take up a motion, I want to say out loud so that they have the opportunity to consider them, because the idea that they, if their timelines don't line up, is not relevant to their decision on whether or not they would like us to move forward now, I think is their decision to make, of course, but that is presuming to me then they believe a sustainable path as an SD on their own. And we've, we've heard how challenging that has been directly from Ripton. So I just, I think, think it's important since we know, it would be as though we pretend we don't know that there's session law about to be signed.
Yeah, the challenge, Kim, is it is speculative. So I only brought it up to make everybody aware that, you know, that this was out there and to make sure that the folks from Lincoln were aware and that they are the ones who are asking us to take this up today. The board's not doing it, but I, but that's as far as I want to go. I really don't want to get into speculative elements of law that's not actually enforced. So if we can try to keep it focused on current law, I would appreciate that. Otherwise, we're going to go off in a lot of different directions.
Okay, then I'll leave the no off-ramp and no protection from school closure off, but I do think importantly, considerations regarding compliance with other laws like universal school meals, PCB testing, special education, transportation, appropriate licensure for administration and highly qualified teachers, all required within EQS, nursing coverage, specials coverage, guidance, social workers. I am considering the full range of responsibilities for a school that is in compliance with ed quality standards. And I think contemplation around that, it seemed clear from one of the exhibits we received, their anticipation is requiring that they are partnering with somebody for superintendency services and that they put that in their exhibit. So absent that partnership and the opportunity, if that falls out of sync, it is, it is really challenging to understand how we could make a finding that is going to support equitable access to high-quality education in compliance of ed quality standards. So.
Folks from Lincoln, would you care to respond to that?
I mean, again, yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I think we appreciate the thought process. The draft motion that the board has prepared today contemplates that the board would make a decision about SU designation on September 22nd. And we fully intend to work toward a decision on that day that makes the most sense for Lincoln, that makes the most sense under the board's authority pursuant to Title 16, Section 261. And that conversation is something that we're fully committed to making a productive one. I guess I'd take issue with the concept that our attempt to identify some productive possibilities in our presentation somehow demands that we prove those out here. Again, I think the board, the board's draft motion correctly identifies the SU designation and all the things that fall out of that as a decision that should be made in September. That makes sense to us. It also makes sense to me that it's a, it's a, it's quite a separate legal issue from whether the board must grant the withdrawal under Section 724.
So, I'm just going to push back a little bit, Mr. McLean, because I'm getting, I feel like we're getting two, we're starting to get two different stories here, right? So as I go back to the report dated 4/11 that was submitted to the board at our April meeting, this included very detailed, well, included discussion of the creation of a mountain supervisory union with Ripton. And it is, it's very clear that the intent is, is to create a supervisory union with Ripton and that that is the evidence that was submitted as, as part of your materials before the board. So you seem to be opening the door to a future argument that would take us down a different path.
No, I mean, to be clear, we're committed to the success of working with Ripton. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say and what I think is really clear, based on our correspondence over the last week regarding this, is that the board's finding today is about whether or not the students in Lincoln will have a place to attend school. And that finding is really the same finding that it made in Ripton's case, based on the same evidence that we presented here, which is that the schools in nearby districts have the capacity for Lincoln students to attend if that, if come what may. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to articulate, and I think I have articulated in our correspondence over the last week, is that a, the discussion about whether or not that's a viable SU is a distinct question from the finding that's in front of the board today.
Okay, well, you didn't raise that in your report, so that's a concern. That's where we're getting a different story here.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, to be clear, to be clear, there's not a different story, Chairman Olson. I'm not sure I understand why you're describing it as a different story. The story, the report that was submitted by the group from Lincoln was an overwhelmingly detailed report that addressed an overwhelming number of issues. And the purpose of that report was, was to identify what our plan was. But as you, as you know, we don't have to demonstrate that we can, that we can operate a school K through six. That is our ambition and overwhelmingly supported ambition by folks in Lincoln. And so I just really, I don't, I don't understand, there is no two stories here. The story is not changing. What we are trying to clarify for the board is, is that we feel the finding that's necessary under Section 2724, it can be made based on the evidence, the same evidence that Ripton submitted, namely that the students in Lincoln will all have a school to attend.
You seem to be suggesting you're going to come back before the board and ask us to unilaterally place you in another SU against their wishes. And that's, that's where I'm coming from here. Can you confirm that that's not the intent?
See that Ron's hands up, so maybe I should let him.
Lincoln has remarkably benefited from an enormous amount of expertise and, and so they've taken extra steps and gone further than the specific issues that have to be addressed in order to, to be allowed to be withdrawn from the, from the Mount Apes School District. That shouldn't be held against the town of Lincoln for having gone further and having demonstrated to the board its diligence and its advanced planning for subsequent steps. You know, they, Lincoln has done significant economic analysis to address, to address some of the questions that Board Member Gleason had asked earlier. That's not particular to this matter today, but it shows diligence. And same with this discussions with Ripton and potential discussions with Starkspurrow. The town of Lincoln's been on top of things and working very, very hard and has done so with significant expertise. And just because we've gone a bit further than what we have to, that shouldn't be held against us today.
Yeah, nobody's holding anything against you. I don't think you've answered the question, but we'll come back to it. There are many other board members who have questions.
I'd also like to, I apologize for interrupting, but we do have representatives here who can certainly answer and add significant more detail to the question of whether Lincoln students will be attending schools that meet EQS and other, and other, we have the expertise here to be able to provide that information to you. And, you know, in many ways, I think it'd be better to hear from them than to hear from the lawyers. And I'd be, you know, I would ask that they be given an opportunity to answer the questions too.
Okay. Lyle, Jennifer, and then Tammy, and then Kim, sorry.
Thank you, Oliver. I apologize for not being at the last meeting and so I'm trying to catch up as quickly as I can here, but I want to go back to something Tammy said earlier, which is around sustainability. At the end of the day, you want your school open. That's what I'm hearing. And you want to have students being served in your town, in your school. I'm looking at the data and perhaps it's provided someplace else, but do you have birth to age four data available to you so that you can project what your population of the school will look like in future years?
I wonder if you. Tori, I wonder, since you're the principal, I know you've looked at this, if you could just talk to us briefly.
I think, if Tori Riley, I think, Tori, you may need to raise your hand so that the powers that be behind the camera can give you the opportunity to turn your microphone and video on if you want.
Hope you can see her and unmute.
Yeah, I've enabled her. She might need to press star six to unmute.
I think Tori is on, she's on with her hand up.
Tori, you should be able to hit the mute button or unmute, rather.
Well, so let me speak to that.
I'm here, thanks. I wasn't able to do those, but thank you, I now can. Yep, so we, we do keep that data and I do population projections out five years. And at this point, there's a, there's a slight dip in the population over the next two years and then it evens off. And at this point, it looks like it will remain steady. So it will remain steady to sustain a school of the size that we will have in the next school year.
Tori, you're saying, I'm sorry, Victoria, that the numbers will look similar to what they are right now. I'm looking at kindergarten nine, first grade nine, and so forth.
Yep.
Thank you.
Jennifer and then Tammy?
Great, thank you. So I'm looking at Exhibit 1 that Mr. McLean, I think you submitted yesterday with the confirmed FY24 available capacity to enroll Lincoln resident students. And from what I'm looking at, there are multiple K to elementary schools, they're, you know, varying cutoffs, multiple elementary schools as well as middle and high schools that would have the capacity to absorb Lincoln students in the event that you guys are not able to stand up your own community school. Is that correct?
Yes, sorry, this is Jeannie Albert. That's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, that's the only question, thanks.
Okay. Tammy and then Kim?
Thank you. Counselor McLean, in attachment G, Exhibit 2, you describe Lincoln School District's plans for meeting the requirements of Rule 2113, which is the federal and state entitlements and non-discrimination rule. In reading this through, I noted that Lincoln School District has contemplated two options for coordinating and providing special education services for students with disabilities. First, through the assignment of the new school district to an existing SU or two, possibly through the formation of a joint SU with the Ripton School District. And I know we talked about SUSD a minute ago, but this to me is actually an important consideration. So I'm curious as to whether Lincoln School District has contemplated the requirements and responsibilities of coordinating, providing special education services if the State Board of Education assigns Lincoln School District as its own SUSD, which would be consistent with our decision that will be made for Ripton School District. And before, sort of maybe some deflections, saying that isn't the issue on the table, I do think it is an issue on the table for now, because I have heard repeatedly today and previously that the first sort of line of, the first inclination is for Lincoln to try to stand up its own school. And so the second line of defense, of course, would be to tuition out. And so I think I have every reason to believe that you will at least initially be trying to provide, to operate your own school in Lincoln. So I really would like some clarification on this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the thoughtful question, Tammy. And as we indicated in the exhibit, first of all, as you all know, 2113 is a very, very broad EQS. It doesn't dwell in a world of specificity, et cetera. And there are pieces of that, such as the maintenance of appropriate records that would allow accurate reporting, certainly privacy rights, et cetera, which we have always, as a school, observed and would continue. In terms of special ed, we had indicated in our report on April 11th, in a section of that report entitled Answers to Questions Important to the Withdrawal Process. And these were questions that had actually been prompted to us by Attorney Russo Savage as things that should be considered. And one of those questions, question number four on page 14 of that report, was what are the plans to provide for special education services? So we did provide some fairly specific information on what is currently occurring in the Lincoln Community School that would continue with regards to compliance with IDEA and also upcoming Act 173, that as you know, will be effective July 1. And also information about the fact that the district has always employed licensed special educators and support staff, et cetera. The other question is, which I think are The other question is, which I think our exhibit responds to, is the issue, and yes, it's not relevant to today, but the whole SU question. And what we've noted is that the SU services will certainly be essential in order to channel federal funds, perhaps most importantly, to ensure this proper supervision and maintenance of records for reporting around IP's, students with special needs, 504, et cetera. But we also point out that the locus of these services at the SU level is yet to be determined. And I should point out for the board's information that, and I think Chairman Olson has characterized this fairly clearly, that we are, in fact, a group of self-selected community representatives, but we are not a duly elected school board. So we're not in a position, for instance, in contemplating with Ripton the possibility of an SU, of making any kind of concrete decisions that might move that vision forward, because, again, we have no authority statutorily or otherwise. So we can only say to you that whatever the State Board might determine, whether it's to designate us, as Secretary French had recommended in April 21, when you were facing a decision with Ripton, that it might make sense for designation of your own SU for withdrawing districts, given the regional instability and the likelihood of structures emerging that we can only dimly contemplate at this time. But that's a possibility, or assigning us to an SU, whatever that may be, we can only point to the fact that we would expect and demand compliance with all special education regulations and laws, whether it be on our own, informing an SU when we finally do have, upon conditional approval from you folks, a duly elected school board. But that's really the best that we can answer right now. And again, I mean this genuinely, appreciate the board's concern about that, because that's always been near and dear to our school is serving those students who have very, very clear identifiable special needs. And so I'll leave it at that, and I hope that satisfies your question.
Thank you, Charles. And just a follow-up observation, if I'm understanding your response correctly, is that at this point in time, you can't actually flush out those details for us as to how, what exactly that might look like, because there are these additional contingencies. And so this would be something that would have to be determined in the future. But my observation on that is this, is that as a small school, declining enrollments, the cost of doing that, right, of having to do that coordination activity as your own SU, could be quite large. And that contributes to our decision for thinking through the sustainability viability of your being able to operate a standalone school. So I understand there's sort of this chicken and egg going on, but I just want to be clear, sort of, the rationale or sort of my thinking around this is, you know, in thinking through whether or not this is a viable option, whether or not Lincoln can stand up and sustain a school that meets quality standards is sort of forefront in my mind. And so that's where I'm at, why I'm asking these questions. But thank you for your response. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I would add that in our financial projections, we've certainly budgeted for that as well. And I guess I will say on behalf of our group that we do, and I mean this again, quite sincerely, we do appreciate both you and Kim's raising some of these questions. And I think it's beneficial for those community members who might be listening in to be, again, assured that we are keenly aware of these. And so thank you for bringing those to the surface. Much appreciated.
So just a little bit of a follow-up, and Kim, I'll come right to you here in a moment. But Mr. Warnock, a follow-up on the relationship with the SU. I've heard sort of characterizations of the SU as sort of a vehicle for contracting, you know, services, including special education. Can you describe how you see the role of the school board and in terms of its oversight of the principal and the teachers in the school? Do you see that that is the responsibility of the school board or the superintendent?
Well, I can speak from my own central office experience as Assistant Superintendent here in Burlington through the 90s, that the primary responsibility for supervision of the principal will be with the superintendent, whoever he or she may be. It's not a responsibility for the board. The board will be held responsible for both maintaining a budget, supervising the office of the superintendent, and of course, developing policy.
Well, supervisor. Well, but if you're going to have a supervisory union, there's going to be a supervisory union board that would oversee, your school board wouldn't directly unless you became a supervisory district.
Right, so I'm trying to understand your question. Are you asking what would the specific role of Lincoln, newly established Lincoln School Board members, what would their role be in supervising the principal?
Yes, correct, yeah. And I think you answered my question. But then you indicated that the school board would be supervising the superintendent, which confused me a little bit, because if you're going to have a supervisory union, yeah.
It would be the Lincoln Board members' representation on an SU board.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah. Tim, and actually, I realize we're at time. So I don't know if folks from Lincoln caught, but we did have a cancellation for our 10:30 slot. I'm looking for my agenda here. So what we're going to do is we're going to just recess the discussion on Lincoln until 10:30, and we'll pick it up again at 10:30. That way, we can turn our attention to our next agenda item, as we have some guests that I know are on a tight timeline. So we will, we're not done, we will pick this up at 10:30. So with that, Tim, would you mind introducing our guests?
I would be happy to, and I'm not sure if I see both John and John Albergini, Lieutenant of Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District, and Edie Greening. And I'm not, I'm just looking at our participant list. I'm hoping they're both with us. The Chair of the Board of Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District. And as neighbors from my time in Essex, with Essex Westford, I found their work to be inspiring. They unified early on under, I think, 153, and they'll correct me when I get this all wrong. But just as a setting message, they unified early on and were a modified Unified Union School District SU or something that I'm getting wrong. But they partnered and all share the same unified high school and have been able to bring to fruition some opportunities through that merger and unification that I think is helpful for us to be able to highlight and see and to share with us the challenges as well. So in that light, we've asked them if they could join us and share their story. Thanks for being here, John. And I'm not sure that I see Edie in the.
I'm here.
Yay, hi, thank you for coming, folks.
Yeah, thank you for having us and listening, taking interest in our school district and allowing us to share a little bit about it. I have some slides, but I'm not, we use a Google platform in Mount Mansfield, so I'm not really familiar with Zoom that much. But I can, we can just reference those and then send them to the board if they would like. Does that make sense? I know you're on a tight timeline.
Yeah, you should be able to, if you hit the share button just to the left of the leave button, just don't hit, just don't hit leave.
Okay, let me see. Is that like the open chair tray? Is that?
Yeah, well, I don't.
While John's doing the technical piece and figuring out a brand-new system, as teachers have had to do so often and administrators have had to do so often over the past couple of years, learn and do at the same time. I'll just say a quick thank you to you all for inviting us and for wanting to hear our story. We began the merging process, gosh, probably more than 10 years ago. We went through a couple of failed merger votes until we finally were able to have all of our districts merge. And so it was a real process. It was long. It was a bit painful. And it concluded in 2019. So, ooh, now I can see everybody. All I had was little circles before. So now everybody's gone again. All right, so it's lovely to see you all for a second. So thank you for asking us here to hear our story. How's it going, John?
I can't do it. I'm sorry.
Don't worry. We can, yeah, if you want to just proceed, we'll.
Yeah, well, I know you're on a tight timeline. So we.
John, you also could drop a link in the chat and we can pull it up that way, if you'd like to do that.
Sure, you can do that.
Having had to do that many times, teaching on Teams, sorry to interrupt.
So as Kim said, we were a modified union for a few years after the first merger. Let's see, we have, so we have five towns in our district. And three of them were all in on the merger, or at least mostly in on the merger, and two were not. We ended up merging with four towns and one was a holdout. And then currently, we are all five towns merged together. Our district was originally eight schools, yep, eight schools. We consolidated one school into central office since the merger and now have seven schools that are, that still have some space for students. But we are not looking at changing that makeup at all. Kim, you have your hand up. Did you want to say something?
They'll keep continuing.
Those are from before. I'll put that down.
Okay.
I'll reserve my spot for later, Oliver.
Yes, thank you. And the same thing, folks from Lincoln, if you could lower your hand, too, that would be appreciated.
And we had nine different school boards before we merged. One was over a three-school district, and the others were individual, six individual elementary school districts. So our districts ranged from housing student, housing 80, roughly 80 students, to 1,600 students. So our district sizes were very large under the supervisory union. Now we're about a 2,600-student school district. John, are you ready to?
Yeah, I think so. So I'm having some technical difficulty here, but I want to tell you a little bit about our school district. Edie talked a bit about it. We became fully unified in 2019. And 2014 is when we were a modified unified union. We serve five towns. It's about 200 square miles, so it's pretty big. We have five elementary schools, two middle schools. We have a district preschool, which is the repurposing that Edie talked about. A union, a big high school comparatively, it's one central office and we, 2,600 students. And just to tell you a little bit about our experience being unified, it was a decade-long process. People put a lot of time and effort into that. And I'm grateful for the communication and the conversations that we have, because I think it's really made us a much stronger school district, you know, over the last decade. But I wanted to share a bit about some of the outcomes. And Edie's going to share a few, too. One thing that has been really evident is our ability to effectively coordinate, implement common initiatives, you know, like our anti-bias and anti-racism work, our literacy initiative, and a lot of other initiatives that are making a difference for students. I don't want to use a lot of jargon, but multi-tiered systems of support. Why that is so important is because all of our schools are using or starting to use common language. And it's a coordinated effort that is really making a difference for students. We're also able to much better share staff and resources. And I'll talk a little bit about why that was so important over the last two years in a bit. But we are able to move people around and where the needs are and move resources around, you know, both personnel and physical resources for each of our nine schools. One other piece that came up this year, which has been, I think, quite illuminating, is the, our ability to allow teachers and staff to be mobile. So, you know, we have, when there are open positions across our school district, teachers and staff can request a voluntary transfer. And I think now more than ever, that has been pretty exciting. And I think it's allowed us to keep teachers and staff excited about what they're doing. Change can be really good and positive for people. And I think that over the last two years, people are looking for possibly something a little bit different. And if you're in the same place, and sometimes this is great for, you know, even 30 years, you know, sometimes that's not as healthy as it could be. Another piece is the coordination of our facilities is so much better. You know, we have a team of maintenance folks and custodial staff who work across each school district, each one of our schools in the district. And our schools are in better condition. We're able to prioritize needs. We're able to have more effectively planned for capital projects. And in the end, that saves money and it's really effective and efficient. Then there's the intentionality around resource equity. When we had eight separate school districts, it was, it was really hard to think about equity in a unified way. And every time that we're talking about anything from our anti-bias and anti-racism work to our literacy work, we're always looking at it through an equity lens. Are people getting what they need and what they deserve? And are we being equitable? That was impossible when we had eight discrete school districts. Yeah, and I'll end with this, a couple of other pieces and then turn it over to Edie. But I can't imagine us not being a unified system in COVID. It was so, so important. We were talking with one voice. We had one committee that was working, our task force, that was working on implementing strategies and mitigation strategies. We had one person that was communicating with the Vermont Department of Health and a couple of us with the Agency of Education. And we were able to really effectively, efficiently, and in a timely way, roll out emergency measures and when we were in a crisis and do it effectively. Yeah, I can't imagine being, you know, eight separate school districts and trying to do that effectively. The result was certainly, the last two years were very challenging, but we didn't have to close any schools. We were able to shift resources when we needed them in different schools, staffing, and I don't think that would have been possible, you know, unless we were unified. We have a few mantras, you know, how can we optimize resources and be as efficient and effective as possible? And, you know, that, I think, has benefited us both on the educational side and, you know, for us to be really good stewards of our buildings and the investments that our community members make in our schools.
And I'll just jump in here, because, you know, John tends to gloss over the wear and tear on him. And I'll just jump in here because, you know, John tends to gloss over the um wear and tear on him and on the principals when there are multiple um multiple school boards. When we started this process, we had forty-five volunteer board members. Um, we have fifteen now, which is still a large board for our for a district. Um, as board chair, I can attest to that. But forty-five different volunteer board members with forty-five different um thought processes and directions and things that are important to them can be really difficult for an administration to be able to take all of that information and synthesize it and try to move the district in one direction. Um, so I think that has, just that piece, has really allowed the administration to focus on teaching and learning. Principals are now focusing on what's happening in their schools and not on managing a school board or taking in all of those different um directives, right? They have a clear boss, which is their superintendent, and they're a step removed from the board, which has really helped our district, again, to unify and to have common goals and policies among all of our elementary schools, um, especially who had different, each one had a different school board to start with. Um, the board, the board is really focused on policy and accountability. Um, we are not focused, we are focused on outcomes. We are not focused on hiring teachers. Um, we are focused on making sure the right principals are in the right schools, right? But not um anything past that. Um, we're focusing on the budget goals, budget targets, and making sure there's equity in our schools. Um, so our smallest school with, you know, eighty to a hundred students um gets the same support that it needs um as our, you know, our other elementary schools with two hundred or more students. Um, and we've really worked to manage, well, we've worked to manage our budget, right? To keep our budget as low as we can, um, which has impacted the tax rate in our district. And we do have five different towns, so common level of appraisal is different in each town. But we um, we're doing our best. We're doing the piece that we can impact um to keep the tax rate low for all of our constituents.
Is that that's, um, so I can't, that won't let me in the chat for some reason to pace. But we were gonna show you a a slide that uh is, over the last four years, um, when you compare pre-merger, pre-complete unification to our being unified, our our ta- our district tax rate has gone down about one point uh three-six cents. And it's been relatively flat over the last four years. And there's no way that we could have done that um with eight discrete school districts. And it was very volatile um when we were in that governance framework. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm really proud of of our school system. And uh, I'm also thankful that we have people that want to work together. And I think that has made us um a lot stronger, you know, over the last four years. So, um, you know, the other piece I'd add is that pre-complete unification, um, it, we've had a few rounds of negotiation and we've been able to settle with both uh our educational support staff and our teachers without mediation or fact-finding, which one, you know, it it creates, I think, a pretty strong culture. And it also saves money. Um, and so that we can be spending on students um and professional development and and learning. And pre-complete unification, um, you know, we had that, that just wasn't the case. So I think that being able to communicate effectively and have that good communication and compromise has been critical.
Thank you. Um, questions from the board, uh, Patrick and then Kim?
Thank you for that wonderful success story. I um just wanted to ask, in all of your um organizing and planning, what would you say was your biggest challenge? What was the greatest hurdle you had to overcome to make this a reality?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I think um it was fear. Um, we have really good schools in our district and folks were afraid that their school was gonna get swallowed up by this bigger district um and lose its sense of um what it was, what it is, right? But what I will say is that every single school has a personality. Every school has things that they are, uh, that they're, that they are proud of, more proud than other schools, that they focus on differently. And one of our schools is more focused on outdoor education, even though all of them are, but it has a bigger program. Um, a couple of our schools have Spanish immersion programs. Um, our schools, like, they all have some different type of a personality. And folks were really, really afraid um that they would lose that. Um, they were afraid that their voices wouldn't be heard in um how schools were being run. Um, and I think that we have shown, I mean, I I I'm not hearing it anymore. I think that we've shown that student education is priority. Um, we train our teachers really well. We spend a lot of time on that and we give the space that the school needs to have um its own sense of self or its own sense of what it is, that that specific school. Um, but yeah, fear, absolutely, fear of the unknown, fear of change.
Thank you.
Kim?
Oh, thanks. Um, I think you just mentioned it there briefly, Edie, but I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the additional opportunities. So Patrick and I didn't plan, but he hit challenges. And I heard you mention briefly the language immersion. I heard earlier, John, and and you both, I think, talking about the repurposing of the building around preschool. And I think that's a public-private partnership and and central office space. Um, and so I just wonder if you might speak a little bit to that because I believe the language immersion became an opportunity after one of your rounds of unification, like some some version of your unification.
Yeah, I I'll talk about the language immersion, John, and then I'll turn it over to you for the preschool, if that's okay. Um, you're absolutely right. Um, it was something that we had looked at and tried to figure out how to um, how to uh give that opportunity to our students, right? How to have more language opportunities for our students um through elementary school. And after merger, so we were able to offer that program in our north-end schools, which is where um the merger happened fully, right? All of the towns in the north merged pretty quickly. Um, and so we were able to um not add staff, but use, take the students that would have been in a kindergarten classroom, um, bring in a language teacher. So although students started in kindergarten, a group of, started as a group of twenty, um, they're going to be at the middle school next year. Um, and they um have been s- being educated in Spanish pre- um since kindergarten. Um, and so they have, that's a cohort there. We have since the second, since 2019, we have added another classroom beginning in our um south-end district. So now we have one program in the north and one program in the south end. And this absolutely could not have happened without having a merged district um where we could, where we could use um resources, share resources, share support staff, share um all of the different programming. And it gave, um, you know, having a pilot program in the north end. So now we have a kindergarten class, a first-grade class, a second-grade class, a third-grade class, and a fourth-grade class in that school. Um, next year, gonna be fifth grade in the middle school. Um, and now we have the programming in the southern district as well. Couldn't have happened. And the learning from the north end makes it easier for the south end to actually run their program. Um, so, John, I don't know if you want to talk about the preschool programming?
Yeah, so this has been, it's really been remarkable and something that, you know, MMU, I think, should be thankful for and proud of is that we, when we repurposed the the Underhill ID building, um, which wasn't easy and, you know, and there, um, at all. Um, we, we now have a birth-to-three program that is using a section of the program of of the building, which is vital. Um, and that's something that we got from some community feedback and some surveys that we did and a needs assessment that there's just no care for kids that are birth-to-three. And we've been able to use some open space to offer um this programming. They're full, um, and it's been super successful. And if you were here and you saw, because I'm here at the building today, because I, we also moved our central office, and you see these, you know, birth-to-three-year-olds using the the playground and walking. It's it's um, it's pretty exciting and inspiring. And then we also have Saxon Hill, which is a cooperative, a nonprofit cooperative that uses some spaces. And then we have our two um public preschools that are using two other classrooms in the building. So we're serving, yeah, um, you know, probably about seventy uh birth-to-five students and giving them high-quality care and uh high-quality early education that's gonna really benefit them down the road. Um, this could not have happened. I can't imagine it would have happened um if we were eight discrete school districts. Uh, and it's really worked really well. And it just, the, just on the Spanish, and and I would add one other thing, that we've also been able to expand our alternative programming within our schools. So using space that was available for students that need a little bit different programming, um, K to A. And those have been successful and are growing and the, and students. What I'm most proud about is that they're in our school community and kid, um, many, many of the students are being integrated back into their their homeschool or staying in the school where they're at and going back into the regular ed environment.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer and then uh Kim and Patrick, you still have your hand up?
I was just wondering if I might just do a quick follow-up. It it is about this. Um, to access the pilot programs with the language immersion, I'm I'm hearing and I'm remembering, I believe you all have a policy to allow families to access choice among the elementary schools in your district? And that allows those from outside of the immediate catchment of a particular building with immersion to access that, right?
Yeah, we also have school choice.
Among the public.
Yeah, among all of the, both middle schools and and all of our elementary schools. I mean, there's some limitations because, like I said, we're two hundred square miles, but we do have people that exercise it. And it's been a great benefit for some students and families to get a, you know, a new start, a fresh start. And if it works for their family, um, you know, usually that that's good for students.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna add to that because I think it's an important piece. Um, we provide transportation for the most part for those students. I think just about all of them, John, we've been able to provide for the students that are accessing school choice. So that that's an equity thing that um folks often don't think about. It's really easy for families who have money to take their kids to whichever school they want to. It's much more difficult if there's no transportation.
Yep, we've been able to to make it work. And that's one of the other real benefits of a unified system is that there's bus stops all over the place. So, you know, typically, we can get people where they need to go.
Jennifer?
Thanks. Um, so I'm just curious, as you moved from eight school districts with forty-five board members down to, you know, one board with fifteen members, how did you determine your representation um to ensure that all of your different board members had a voice or feel that they have a voice? I'm just, because I know different.
No, it's a good question.
Like, settled on different formulas. So I'm just curious to know what you all landed on.
Yeah, it's a really good question, and it was something that folks um were very concerned about. Um, it turns out we have about fifteen thousand um voters living in our district. Um, so we have roughly um one representative for every thousand members. And it turns out that our smallest town has about twelve hundred people in it. Our largest town has about four, five, fifty-two, I think, hundred people in it. So um each town is represented. We have one town with one vote, with one board member, one town with two, one town with three, one town with four, and one town with five, um, completely based on population. And as we did the census, we found that we were exactly properly distributed still. So that was um important also.
Yeah, and I just had one that I've been here, I've been in MMU for twenty years and, you know, and and our unified board, we've, I, the board members really look at supporting all students in all towns. That's the way they've approached it. It really has not been an issue. I have not seen it. Um, and I I've been, you know, superintendent for over a decade. And it's really prioritizing, the the students that are in Underhill are are as important as the students in Huntington. And the board members are thinking about the best interests of kids throughout the district. That's the way they've, that's the way they they've governed.
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction. And I think that when you um as a board are looking at the district as a whole, rather than any specific school and only focusing on that specific school, it allows you to say, can we do this as a district, right? Whatever it is, how does this work as a district? And how do all of our students benefit as a district? And it's um, it's a big shift from looking at just my elementary school to all of the middle schools and the high school and how, what does, what do all students need to be successful at the different levels as they move throughout our our district?
Yeah, and that's been a big mind shift. And I can say this with real sincerity, that the, our preschoolers are as important as our twelfth graders and everybody in between. And, you know, that is, to me, that's exciting, and it's where we need to be as a state.
Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, it was a wonderful presentation. Great to hear about your uh your success and and certainly wish you guys well uh in your uh continued success. And thank you for sharing your your story.
Thank you for having us. I hope you have a great day. It's beautiful outside, so try to get out.
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Oliver, they um are able to share their presentation with us. Could we add it to the minutes?
Yeah, I will send it to, I'll send it to Maureen. I'm sorry about the technology.
Yeah, no, no, no worries. Um, we, we struggle as well with it from time to time.
Um, and I just to add, thank you so much for inviting us. And if there are other districts that wanted to talk about it, you can absolutely send them. Um, you know, Kim has my contact information. You can send them to me. I'm happy to talk to board members or superintendents. Um, because this has been such an incredible success for us. It has exceeded our expectations, so thank you.
Excellent, thanks again. So, um, at at this time, um, we're going to return to item G, uh, which is the discussion of Lincoln. Uh, I, looks like we have our our folks from Lincoln back with us. Uh, and just to sort of get everybody reoriented, um, you know, picking up on the discussion we had, uh, uh, Counselor McLean, um, uh, you know, it it's been stated in some of the correspondence that uh that we've received that uh you feel that the uh uh that Lincoln has, um, you know, provided the board with sufficient evidence. And I I just want to point out that, you know, the presentation at at the meeting in April and the materials, uh, oh, sorry, um, can we grant uh Lincoln access to their microphone and video, please? Excellent. Um, are you with us now? I can see you on video.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Perfect. Um, so, so I just, I I want to point out that uh the materials that were submitted, the presentation that was given back in our our meeting in April was was all oriented around the the uh, the idea that Lincoln would be operating um an elementary school. And and therefore, the board, a lot of the board's focus was on uh understanding how that elementary school, because that was the proposal, would meet ed quality standards. And as Professor Colby pointed out earlier, one of the standards incorporates by reference uh all of the uh, you know, federal entitlements, namely IDEA, uh, special education services, et cetera, which, under Vermont state law, necessitate a a supervisory union or supervisory district construct. So that was the purpose, because there was some characterization earlier that somehow the board was was off course and and asking inappropriate questions. And and I want to point out that we were asking questions and probing around uh these issues uh because they are, they were directly relevant to a finding uh of of the proposed elementary school that Lincoln suggested it would be operating uh would be in compliance with with EQS. And and that's why we've been asking so many questions and why we feel it's so relevant. Um, and until, yes, late yesterday afternoon, we didn't have evidence. Um and until yes, late yesterday afternoon, we didn't have evidence. Uh we didn't have, there were, there were missing, there were gaps in in some of the the evidence. And I think as you can tell from our questions, there's still a number of other points. The other point I want to highlight is there were some references to the precedent with with Ripton. And as we pointed out in the very beginning of this conversation, we are operating in a bit of the Wild West under current law. It's it's deficient in many ways. I think we all acknowledge that. And the board has done its best to um work within the limited um guidance that we have uh in in statute. And we've learned from experience and uh Ripton, um I I would suggest, uh you know, if we went back to Ripton at the time of their proposal, they had um, you know, suggested to the board that they were in advanced discussions uh with a a supervisory union uh that would be willing to take them. We only learned after the fact, um after we approved them, that that actually did not materialize. Uh so there was a bit of a lesson learned there and 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 we've sort of evolved into a a trust but verify mode. So um with that, uh board members, um questions? Uh Kim.
Thank you. Um so I I'm very concerned listening to staffing considerations and again, sort of bearing in mind the intent and interest for those of you before us and as indicated by the vote of your electorate, the interest in operating Lincoln School independently. Um the responsibility that goes with that requires, you know, any, all of the things that I mentioned in the last line of questioning in an environment where the staffing considerations throughout the state and all, all professions are challenged. But I don't know if there are many more so than education right now. The availability of qualified special educators, uh the number of openings and superintendencies, the ability to operate a district with the necessary qualified staff is is compromised in in all of our, throughout the state, probably throughout the nation at this point. And I think that is a very real concerning consideration. Um I think because we are in a position to have to consider, um if we were to consider this request, um we are doing so knowing that there are additional options provided for in legislation simply yet to be signed. Um and I don't.
Sorry. Really have the caution not to bring in that we we need to stick with existing law.
Okay. Well, under existing law, I feel it irresponsible to consider this request at this time, particularly knowing that there are options that are are referenced in what's been proposed that could be derailed by something as simple as inconsistent timelines. Because if that should be signed, that could happen. And what is contemplated for ability to provide superintendency services, which are not just record keeping, but are substantial, um seems compromised potentially um by what is out there in the universe for potential partners. I think that there is tremendous concern that school closure is protected in what's out there in the universe and at least for a period of time. And the reality of not being able to staff a school district that stands alone as Lincoln could mean a more quickly having to leave that community without a school. And I doubt that that would be the intent of the electorate. And if the electorate, I I am wondering, I certainly know it's the interest of those folks before us to move quickly on this decision. But I'm not sure that if the electorate understood what they were foregoing in potential options under what is likely to be signed, they would wish for that rapid a response. Um when what is being contemplated even in the draft motion that we're gonna, we may be asked to consider is similar to that which is out there in the universe, but that which is out there in the universe offers more protections. And so I feel it irresponsible for us to consider um limiting options in this case. And I'm not quite sure why those before us requesting that we do so see it differently. And I'm curious what risk they feel there is to complying with what might be signing.
I I'm going to ask that the members from Lincoln not answer that question. And I'm sorry, Kim, but we really need to stick within our our lane here uh and not get in a speculation about the the future law. They um we've established that they are aware of of the law. They have requested that we expedite this review. We are considering this per their request under current law. So we need to confine our questions uh to current law. Other board members, questions? By the way, our consi- just to be clear, our consideration and our decisions need to be constrained by current law. We cannot make any decisions um based on what may happen with prospective legislation. Uh Mr. Lovett and then Jenna.
Yes, thank you. Um I just a clarifying question. I think you said that you um had figured in the extra um staff that will be needed to be your own um SU um to run the central office. So you figured that into your financial projections. Um and that's a different question than Kim's, if the staff is actually available. But uh is that right that you have figured in to your budget that those staff that will be needed to run the SU?
Put your on mute.
Yep.
We're back.
Uh yes, yeah, it's a really good question. It's one we've been concerned about for a while. We have hired um a consultant who very recently was the business manager for uh an adjacent uh school district. And she and us have worked pretty hard at understanding the budget implications. And we are confident uh that we can do it. To some extent, we've been surprised that it's come out so well. So um we're not concerned about that, uh but it is important and we will continue to monitor that.
Thank you. Uh Jenna.
Thanks. I I appreciate the work of the the Lincoln community and the efforts um that have gone into thinking about what a community school looks like. And I think it's a difficult, um it's difficult to withhold personal opinions on what makes a great school versus what's the best fit for a community. And I think that your community um represents what you think your community needs. And throughout our state, we have different models of how elementary schools look, how districts look. And I think what makes them unique is that they're definitely in, they're individualized by community. So I think um we've we've asked like some complicated questions. You've presented a model that might not sound distinctly or um distinctly sustainable or offerings for curricula that would enhance some opportunities for some of the students. Although um I think there has to be some level of trust that you're representing what your community needs and wants. I just wanted to thank you for the the information that you've been able to provide to us.
Thank you. Uh Patrick.
On on mute here. So having a budget is a different uh thing from having our able to find a workforce. There is a workforce shortage in the state of Vermont, including teacher shortage. What strategies are you gonna use that's different from other um schools to attract teachers? Because you uh you have the budget, but how are you gonna find teachers? Can you give us an example of a strategy that you're gonna use or a guarantee that you have that you can place teachers in the school, in the Lincoln School?
Hi, thank you. That that that's an excellent question and um it it's spot on, given the current labor shortage for sure. And and I I guess I want to speak to to Jenna's comments as well that um we have, in fact, um prided ourselves in having a school that does fit our community. And in fact, it's 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 been a destination school. Unlike a number of other schools in our district, uh Lincoln has had a veteran staff. People have come and they've stayed because there's a sense of community there that's truly palpable. I'm not suggesting, Patrick, that that's going to be a bona fide way to ensure that we're gonna get teachers. Um I'm not that naive by any means. Um but what I would like to say is that all of these questions that you've raised um are of concern to us as well. We appreciate your sincerity in bringing these up and being assured that you have given us every potential warning um about where we're going. And I do want to again assure you that our transparency with the community has been one hundred percent. Uh there isn't a person in Lincoln that isn't aware of what we're doing. We've used Front Porch Forum. We've used all sorts of medium uh media to uh keep people well informed. I I do think that many of the the questions you've asked, especially uh some of the good questions around how we would staff, how we would find staff, um how we would get competent teachers, special ed services, SU services, these are things that are going to be on the plate of a duly elected school board. Um and we have every confidence uh that, given the opportunity to elect a school board, they will work tirelessly and be prepared in September to respond with a greater deal of specificity to the questions that you're seeking to get confirmed and answered now. And uh it really uh again, working within the confines of of current statute, I think it begs the question at this point um as to um whether or not you can put a motion on the table that allows approval so that we can move forward to elect a school board and begin to generate um serious data uh and really credible responses to the questions that right now, um as Chair Olson has characterized it, in the Wild West of uh current seven twenty-four, um we're not dodging, we're just not a school board. Uh we're, you know, self-selected community members who have worked very hard and stay very connected to our community. So we're looking forward to um your approval of the motion so that we can get back to doing um yet the harder work. And by the way, we have always reckoned with the fact that everything we've done over the past two years to date constitutes the preparatory effort. And that getting approval from you folks is, as we have said to each other, that's when the work really begins.
So I think it's um I I'm happy to continue taking questions from board members, but I uh just in looking at at the time here, I want to do a, I guess, just a straw poll uh of of board members at this point, um and get a sense for where folks are at. So and maybe a couple of straw polls. So the the first is um do do board members uh feel that they um need more information at this point? Um do we need to continue this discussion? So that's the first question. Okay, I'm seeing a a mix here. Kim, your hands up. Uh Tammy? Nope, okay.
Um yeah, I guess you referenced the communication with the community and.
Sorry, sorry, Kim, that wasn't an invitation to the question. I just want to get a sense for.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Whether we're gonna continue this conversation.
Sorry about that.
I'm I'm sensing a majority of the board feels like we've we've um we probably need to sort of wrap this up. Um so my next sort of straw poll question is um uh before we put a formal motion on the table, I just want to get an informal sense of uh of the of the board and that that is uh, do you feel like you have sufficient information uh to make a decision, uh excuse me, to make an affirmative decision today? Any, I I'm sensing a, I think folks are saying yes. Okay, Kim, you're a no. Tammy?
I I know we're not talking about it, but I'm contemplating the double buy we're in, which is entertaining a motion while we know that legis- that there's pending legislation that would send this entire conversation in a different direction. And I know we're not talking about that. It it's just, it's hard in my head to separate the two and I'll just be transparent about that. If in fact, we're putting a motion on the table under current law, then I'm prepared to vote on it, yes.
Okay. Uh Tom?
Is your question referencing the draft motion?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that that the agency prepared. Uh Lyle?
So a question on on that. We vote in the affirmative and then we are inviting the newly constituted board to join us in September.
Correct.
What authority at that point does the State Board of Education have over anything we hear at that meeting?
So we, so the purpose of that uh discussion would be to us uh to create a supervisory union as has been proposed by the folks from Lincoln, and I will underscore that. Um or to uh assign them to a supervisory union, uh if they can find a supervisory union willing to accept them. Uh or to designate them as a supervisory district. Um so and those are all, regardless of what happens, that's current law, that would be, if you continue to be future law, we will have that that authority as we've always had. And and obligation, I should say. Okay. And and I just, what I'd like to do before we actually put a formal, I don't want to put a formal motion on the table unless um there's a sense amongst the board that we're not only prepared to vote on it, but that we are prepared to vote in the affirmative. Because I think we could really confuse uh things even, we could muddy the waters even further if if we took a vote and voted in the negative. So if you're not prepared to vote in the affirmative or the draft motion, um I'd like to know that now. Tim?
I would not be able to vote in the affirmative. Um I think that we have an obligation to take all information available into consideration. And I think that um we would have no greater authority under the new law to stop their process. And I think that we are, we are binding them to have fewer opportunities and I feel irresponsible in doing that if the vote, the vote passed. I don't know what the number was, passed in both bodies. Oh, it's either awaiting veto or without signature, it goes into law. So it's not as though the session is still open, there's still conference committee, they're still considering this. I I think it would have been difficult for any of these folks to have offered um the community through Front Porch Forum or anything else, um the latest uh conference committee approved uh language, like approved by both bodies. And I don't, I don't want to make assumptions, perhaps you have. I just think what's being asked of us today, I would vote differently in June on the very same question under session law. That has been approved by both bodies and awaiting signature. So I would vote no today. And same question asked under session law, I would vote yes.
Okay. Uh Tammy?
Thank you. I just, and I know, I believe that the counselors have said this previously, but before we move any forward, I just want the counselors to reaffirm for me that they are clear that by taking a vote today, it introduces a different set of risks for Lincoln and Lincoln School District going forward, if in fact, we do vote affirmative. And I would like to have clear verbal confirmation from the attorneys that they understand that they are introducing that risk for their clients by us taking a vote today. Thank you.
This is Ron speaking on behalf of the town. We, I think the town is fully aware of the risk of proceeding today. And part of that awareness is having done an enormous amount of homework to be able to pave the way for answering the supervisory union questions that the board has posed. And, but those are questions that can only really be answered once we have a school board in place that can put that in place, put that, put those issues and actually answer those questions. And, but there's
Counselor Shim, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to clarify. I'm not talking about the risk with respect to the SU designation. I'm talking about the risk that is introduced by the fact that you're asking us to make a decision under current law. And we know that if this other law is signed or just goes into effect, that that would introduce a new set of opportunities for Lincoln that they do not have now, particularly with an off ramp. I just want to be clear, I want to know, I want, I want a clear statement from you and Counselor McLean that your clients understand that if we vote in the affirmative today, that your clients understand that those opportunities that would be provided under this new law are opportunities that they have essentially forfeited by us taking a vote today. I understand the SUs and all that, but you understand my point. I want, for me, before I make a decision on what to do here, I want to be clear that you understand that you are assuming that risk and forfeiting opportunities that you might have otherwise.
Yes, thank you for clarifying your question. The answer is yes. We've gone through the Section 6 quite carefully. We've weighed and balanced the benefits and the pros and cons, and we've chosen to proceed today.
And can I just clarify that as I see those three? And, and, you know, Donna, of course, correct me if I'm getting this wrong. No option to change operational date, no protection from school closure, and no off-ramp option. Those are the three, as I see them, provided for in session law, not provided if we were to vote today.
Yes, we're aware of that. I'd remind the board of Counselor McLean's opening about, and in that regard, I truly appreciate Chair Olson's taking of a straw poll. Where we're asking for an affirmative vote, and if it's not going to be affirmative, then we'd be given the opportunity to provide further information. A negative vote, I think, would create risk that's not acceptable to us.
Counselor McLean, if you could answer Professor Colby's question?
Same answer from me. We have advised our clients about, I think it's more accurate to say that we have advised our clients that Section 6 will not apply if the board votes affirmatively today. And that means that anything particularly in Section 6 of the H 727 would not apply. I can't speak to the suggestion, Kim's suggestion, that that would affect closures. I don't, I don't see that in Section 6. But I can speak to the fact that our clients have definitely been advised that if you take action today, that order that's been drafted would govern the process of Lincoln's withdrawal going forward. And Lincoln would not be able to vote to, or take advantage of any portion of Section 6.
Chair Olson, if I put what the select board thinks about this?
Yes, please.
Just 30 seconds. So we had a select board meeting last night. I brought this issue up. We had a thorough discussion of it. And the select board is, wants us to go forward to this. I explained the risk, I explained the current law, and I explained the new law. And the select board is 100% behind going forward, understanding that we give up those options.
Okay. I very much appreciate you undertaking that due diligence with your board colleagues. I certainly wouldn't want to be on the select board and then find out after the fact that this happened without consultation. So I very much appreciate that. As a follow-up to Professor, you know, Colby's, you know, pointed question, I just, and I, I'm looking at the timeline, a very detailed timeline that's been provided. And Mr. Ferlenza, in your cover note, you identified that, I'm paraphrasing here. I don't have your email in front of me, but that, something that in fact, that it is an aggressive timeline. And in addition to potentially for, well, certainly foreclosing your opportunity to avail yourselves to the special privileges contemplated in Section 6 of H 727, an affirmative vote of the board today locks you into a very aggressive timeline with a go-live next July, which, you know, it feels like a year away, but time, time's going to fly. And I'm, again, I'm drawing upon our experience with Ripton. And, you know, a year ago this time, they came before the board. We learned that they, that there was some concern about the staff not staying at the school. And a review of recent meeting minutes indicate that, you know, a year later, they're still in the same position. So I'm just, you know, this is, this is your risk to take. And I just want to make sure that you, and it seems clear to me that you guys acknowledge this risk and you're taking it with good counsel. And so anyway, Kim?
Thank you. Just to clarify, because Counselor McLean says, I don't see the the protection from school closure in Section 6. It's not, it's in Section 9. And Section 9 puts a moratorium on school closure for two years. If we were to approve Lincoln as an independent body today, they are an independent body and not protected from school closure under the unified school district. So you are on, would be on your own to be able to stand up a school, a school district in that building with necessary staff for July 1 of 2023. The flexibility and timeline afforded in the session law would allow deferral to the following year. And, you know, that may put you in line for other things. But again, I, knowing there is law either ready to be signed or become law and the legislative session is closed, I will just say again, I would feel irresponsible in, for me, in approving a request for withdrawal today and would feel differently in a request that comes in June, for instance. And so I think it's, I think it's important to point you to the right section of the law that will become effective, which is Section 9. And I'm not sure if that had been discussed with the select board as a protection afforded under the new legislation.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Ferlenz, I don't know if, there was a little bit of a question there. I don't know if you want to respond to that?
Closure in Section 9?
Sorry, sorry. Are we unmuted? Yes?
Yes.
If the question is, are, is our group aware that the decision about whether to close Lincoln would be in the hands of the Lincoln School Board following this decision, the answer is absolutely yes. And yes, to the extent that, that there are other portions of the session law that, you know, would depend upon us being a participant in an existing union district like MAUSD. We understand that we are withdrawing from those districts, so those would not apply.
We understand.
Okay, so understood that no longer protected from school closure, but, and understand that if, I guess it sounds like your timeline would require then, if you don't have a partner, that you're going to stand this up on your own, or the school would have to close?
I mean, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure what, where the question is in there. I think, like the folks from my group have said today, there's a pretty significant dedication to making this work. And we look forward to being able to, you know, get boots on the ground, so to speak, after we elect a school board.
Lyle and Tammy, sorry, I'm just going to try to move us along here. Lyle and then Tammy?
Sure, not understanding because I'm not as intimately involved as all of you on the screen from Lincoln. I'm struggling to appreciate the sense of urgency that you come to the table with today. I'm wondering why 2024 was not something that you considered as opposed to 2023 to go operational? And maybe it's a longer discussion, and I apologize, Oliver. But I'm trying, I'm trying to get to yes, and right now I'm not at yes yet.
Lincoln?
So if I understood your question correctly, we are aware that we could be doing this in 2023 or '24. Our choice is really to do it now. We believe that we have the team that's gotten us this far. And we believe the team will continue to work on this very hard, as will Tori Riley. So I'm totally committed to 2023. There have been enormous conversations in Lincoln around kitchen tables and in the general store and a whole bunch of other places. And the town is aware that this is a serious issue, and their choice is to go ahead.
Tammy?
Thank you. Charles, I just want to respond to your question a minute ago. You asked, sort of, you were looking for a straw poll on a yes or a no, and I sort of deflected at that point. Let me, let me circle back to that. So is, I understand it sort of from Counselor Russell Savage's memo and other information we've verified. You know, the litmus test we have to sort of check out here is whether or not Lincoln School District would have a place to send their students that would meet educational quality standards and the other state board rules. And so to me, like, that's, that's, and if we're operating under current law, that's kind of, that's kind of where we are for the decision here. I just want to be clear, I remain concerned that Lincoln School District may not be on a sustainable path. And I think, you know, the message that should be going back to the Lincoln representatives today is that I think you're hearing this from all of us here that have been speaking, that you're not, we are concerned you're not on a sustainable path to operating your own K-6 elementary school. And the plan and the evidence that you provided to us at this time reflects a lot of risk to both Lincoln students and the Lincoln community. That said, you know, I don't know, and I don't know that we have sufficient evidence right now to find that you could operate a standalone K-6 elementary school. That said, I think at this time, all we can find, and this gets to sort of your question, Oliver, and where I would vote, at this time, the finding we can make is that there's capacity for Lincoln students to attend other area schools that meet state board education rules. And if that's the decision point, then I, then I feel as if I'm sort of boxed in here and having to say, yes, I would vote in the affirmative. But in voting with the affirmative, you know, it's planting some flowers around and saying, like, there's a lot of risk here. And I've heard the counselors say that their clients understand that risk. But, and I think, again, I'm just echoing what I'm hearing other board members say, which is, I am not sure that you're on a sustainable path. And to Lyle's point, you know, imposing a timeline of 2023 without a clear reason to do so just feels real risky to me. But again, if the question is, on the, if the decision point or sort of the criteria we have to use here is, is there a place for Lincoln students to go to school that meet, right, approved requirements? Then the evidence provided that you would tuition out your students meets that evidence, not the fact that you provided sufficient evidence that you can stand up a school. So I hope that clarifies my position for you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. And we've received that critical piece of evidence, which we did not have at our last meeting. We received that late yesterday afternoon. So Jenna and then Kim?
Mine's just really quick. I love that you have a lot of kitchen table conversations. And I think the community spirit here is amazing. I just will echo what Tammy just said, the cost of doing this is huge. And we haven't had even a deep conversation about the cost of tuitioning high school students or, you know, grades, the upper grades out of the district and how that has a huge, deep, long, year after year impact on the elementary school. Because those fixed costs of tuitioning out those students have to come from somewhere. And I don't know if your conversations have included tuition rates and what those look like when they're increased and revenue is not increased on the other side and costs keep going up.
That's a great point. And it's not just the tuition. It, that's a big piece of it, but it's also just the way the funding formula works from one year to the, you get these weird effects. And then that puts, as you know, as a former elementary school principal in a district like this, with this configuration, it puts pressure on your elementary school. And I, I don't think that's recognized because this is new and different for Lincoln. Kim?
Sorry, thank you. And please, I know I've asked challenging questions. Please know I really appreciate the depth of work you all have done and the outreach in your communities. I think the challenge is that what ultimately is now available has been determined by what was happening around Legislative Education Committee tables. And those options are now to provide opportunities that weren't afforded likely when those conversations were happening before. Our interest, my interest, is to see that we are in a position to help support, if it's the will of the communities, partnerships that could make it sustainable. Knowing that I feel as though we had heard a keen interest that this all was precipitated by the fear of closure of a school and to know now that's protected. And this forgoes that is a conflict I can't get around. I think it is a disservice to what could be a successful partnership to, you know, allow for potential alignment with timeline that gives you partners to be successful in this. So a vote in the affirmative at this time limits your options. And I feel you have done a considerable amount of work, but it presumes partnership and potentially puts you out of sync with that. And I just simply cannot in good faith, knowing what exists as options, vote in the affirmative and wish you luck on getting through an aggressive timeline, potentially on your own. I think that may run exactly counter to the reason that the community voted to withdraw. And I don't want to make presumptions of your community's intent, but you all have shared that that was a fear that drove this work initially. Thank you. And please, I do appreciate the work you've done. I believe it will bring forward very fruitful conversation and study. and study throughout a process. I just am concerned that it doesn't have the necessary components to be successful right now.
Okay. So I'm, I'm hearing one clear, as far as a straw poll, one clear no. Are there any other noes? Lyle, you're, that's a no? Okay. Any other, any other noes? Otherwise, I'm going to presume everybody else is a provisional yes on the straw poll. So I just want to return, so a couple, I can't stress this enough. Had we, in light of the passage of H 727 in the legislature last week, it could have been and likely would have been viewed by some, if not many, as an aggressive move by the state board to schedule this for vote today, because it would have created the appearance that the board was trying to short circuit the process and to take rights and special considerations away from the voters of Lincoln, and that in effect, it was, would be thumbing our nose at the General Assembly. We are only taking this up at your request, and we are only putting this up for a vote at your request. And quite frankly, because, you know, we've, we've, we've been, we've been sort of threatened. So that's why we're taking this up. And, and for those in the legislature and the General Assembly who are listening to this conversation, I, I just want to express and acknowledge that the potential offense, and, and I want to be very clear that that is not the board's intent. So from Lincoln, I also want to be really hear clearly from Lincoln that, again, your proposal is, is to come back with a plan for supervisory union with Ripton. That, that's the plan that was submitted. And as, and I, I want to make sure that we're not deviating from that, because that's, that is part of the equation here. You're on mute.
Yes, Charles, and that is the plan, September.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I really, yeah, I don't want to be opening the door to a request to forcibly assign you to an unwilling supervisory union, or to, worse yet, to deconstruct, to be asked to deconstruct a supervisory district, because that, that has much greater impact on others. Certainly, if you're able to find a willing partner, that, you know, we would love to hear that. But right now, the plan is Lincoln and Ripton. Okay. So with that, board, would someone care to offer the motion as prepared? Jennifer?
It's a mouthful. And just in the interest of, because there's a lot to follow along with, does everyone have a copy that they can access? I just want to make sure before I start reading this that everyone has a copy, or, you know, if you need someone sent to you, we can send you a link.
For the purpose of those watching, would it be helpful to put it on the screen, Jennifer?
Well, it's on the website. It is on our website.
Yeah, you're right, Oliver. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, if that question was for us, we certainly have the motion, EDU State Board Item G, which, which is, which is the draft motion.
That was prepared by Donald S. Savage and emailed out yesterday.
Correct.
Just checking. All right. I move that, one, based on the information provided by the self-selected representatives of Lincoln to both the state board and the Lincoln voters, and in reliance upon the written assurances of the attorneys representing the Lincoln representatives and the town of Lincoln that, quote, "sufficient information has been presented to demonstrate," end quote, "compliance with 16 VSA Section 724 as it existed when the representatives initiated the withdrawal action," henceforth known as former Section 724, "and that the Lincoln representatives have met the, quote, 'only standard,' end quote, required by the former Section 724. The State Board of Education finds that if it reconstitutes the Lincoln School District for pre-kindergarten through grade 12 effective on July 1, 2023, the students living in Lincoln, quote, 'will attend a school that is in compliance with the rules adopted by the state board pertaining to educational programs,' end quote, "in the 2023-2024 academic year, including rules related to education quality standards and to other state and federal laws.'" Two, the State Board of Education therefore approves through request of the Lincoln voters to withdraw from the Mount Abraham Unified School District, the MAUSD, pursuant to former Section 724. Three, the State Board of Education declares that the withdrawal of Lincoln from the MAUSD shall be fully effective on July 1, 2023. Four, the State Board of Education declares, A, that the Lincoln School District is hereby reconstituted as a pre-kindergarten through grade 12 school district; B, that the Lincoln School District shall assume sole responsibility for the education of its resident students in pre-kindergarten through grade 12 on July 1, 2023, and that until such time, the MAUSD, as a school district and a supervisory district, shall continue to be responsible for the education of all students residing in Lincoln. C, that between May 18, 2022, and July 1, 2023, the Lincoln School District shall exist exclusively for the purpose of taking all steps necessary for the district to assume sole responsibility for the education of Lincoln students in a manner that meets education quality standards and all other state and federal laws on July 1, 2023. Subpart Roman numeral one, election of school board members, the Secretary of State calls a special election at which the Lincoln School District voters elect school board members pursuant to 16 VSA Section 424C. Subpart Roman numeral two, negotiation of financial agreement, the Lincoln School Board and the MAUSD Board negotiate and finalize the proposed financial details of withdrawal pursuant to the former Section 724C. Subpart Roman numeral three, approval of financial agreement, the voters residing in each non-withdrawing town within the MAUSD vote to approve the negotiated financial arrangements pursuant to the former Section 724C. Subpart Roman numeral four, budget for fiscal year 2024, the Lincoln School Board prepares a proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, the district's first year of operations, and the voters of the district approve that, approve a budget for that year. Subpart Roman numeral five, supervisory union services, the Lincoln School Board prepares for the provision of supervisory union services to the Lincoln School District as determined pursuant to paragraph five of this motion. Subpart Roman numeral six, other transactional activities, the Lincoln School Board takes all other actions necessary to transition to full operations on July 1, 2023, including any actions pursuant to 16 VSA Section 1804 or otherwise that are necessary to address the collectively bargained rights of employees of the MAUSD, the former employing entity. D, the Lincoln School District shall not be entitled to administrative or other services from the MAUSD as supervisory district until such time as the state board makes a determination of supervisory union boundaries. Five, in connection with the provision of supervisory union services to the Lincoln School District, A, the State Board of Education invites the representatives of the Lincoln School Board to attend the state board's regular September 2022 meeting to present its proposals regarding the provision of supervisory union services, including those necessary to meet education quality standards and other state and federal laws, and to answer state board questions. B, the State Board of Education notifies all interested parties of its intent, quote, "to review supervisory union boundaries on its own initiative," end quote, pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261A at its regular September 22, 2022 meeting, at which meeting it will decide whether to, one, assign the Lincoln School District to an existing multi-district supervisory union; two, create a new supervisory union that includes the Lincoln School District or one or more other town school districts and/or union school districts; or, three, designate the Lincoln School District as a supervisory district in order to provide its own supervisory services.
Now, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Tom Lovett. Is there any discussion?
Hi, thank you. Again, while appreciative, I will be voting no. And I, I think it just is a reasonable pause to think that we are part of the interest in expediting this process, let's say, as opposed to considering in June, is to allow for the election of a school board to make big decisions. And here we are, being, as you suggested, Oliver, threatened or forced into an action that seems to do an end run around the legislative intent, and by, as indicated in the motion, self-appointed, self-selected representatives of Lincoln. And so I just, I want to, I want to sort of name it and indicate that discomfort, particularly again, since I could vote differently had we been able to consider this in June. Thanks.
And thank you for that, Kim. And also to Professor Colby's earlier point, I wanted to be very clear on the record that our findings are based solely on the evidence that was submitted late yesterday, specifically that there would be a place to send schools outside of Lincoln, K through 12. This should not and must not be interpreted as any finding whatsoever that the Lincoln Community School will meet EQS. My personal perspective is that we don't have all the answers, and we do not have sufficient evidence, and that is not the basis of our decision today. Other comments, discussion? All righty. So this will be, will need to be a roll call vote because it clearly will not be unanimous. So Maureen, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Okay, Patrick Brown? Lyle Jepson?
No.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
No.
Jennifer Samuelson? Jenna O'Farrell? Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Chair be voting?
No, I'll not be voting.
Four yeas, three nays?
All righty. So there you have it. The motion has carried on a vote of four to three. And the state board has now declared the withdrawal complete pursuant to the motion that we just adopted. Next up, Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Should we also move the questions with regard? Okay.
Yeah, that was my, that's what I was going to ask you to do.
Okay, well, here I am. All right. I move that pursuant to 16 VSA Section 724C, as it existed when the self-selected representatives of Lincoln initiated the withdrawal action, the State Board of Education, one, finds that, quote, "it is in the best interests of the states, the state," I'm sorry, "the students and the school districts remaining in the unified union school district, that the Mount Abraham Unified School District continue to exist," end quote. And two, declares that, quote, "the Mount Abraham Unified Union," I'm sorry. Let me start again. Two, declares that the Mount Abraham Unified School District shall continue to exist despite the withdrawal of Lincoln as a member," end quote.
All right, you've, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I've taken that.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Lovett?
I wonder if it's wise to have members of that school district join us in, in June before we vote on this to get their take on that.
It's a fair question. It's, it's kind of a housekeeping matter, but, but it is a fair question. Donna, would you care to, would there be any, any harm to holding off on this? Does it create any problems that you can foresee?
I don't foresee any problems with this, no. I, I think that it would be perfectly fine to ask them how they will proceed without Lincoln as a member.
Okay.
Should I withdraw the motion? I'll withdraw the motion.
Well, consider the, the motion withdrawn. Thank you for that. Thank you, Tom, for, for raising that question. All right. I think this concludes our, our work with Lincoln. I appreciate Lincoln. I appreciate your patience and the work that you've put into this. And I, I'm very glad that you have heard our concerns and our cautions. And I appreciate you taking the time to make it clear that you, you understand the risks and, and you're taking responsibility for those risks. So we will now move on to our next agenda item, and I apologize to our guests for
Excuse me, excuse me, Chair, sorry to interrupt. We just wanted to express our gratitude and thank you for, for approving the motion today, and we appreciate your concerns and thanks, thanks for your time.
Likewise, thank you.
All righty. So next up is item J. And again, I apologize, we're, we're running behind schedule here, but we do have some guests with us, and in particular, we've got, we have a teacher that we're going to be honoring today. So Kate, are you with And so Kate will need to be unmuted, if you will. Maureen?
Yes, she's unmuted. While she's enabled.
She has the ability to unmute. So Kate, if you can hit the
Can you hear me now?
Now, yes. Now, yes. Okay. So, so Kate, so I've asked Kate to join us today on behalf of this, this award program. So she's going to provide the board with a little bit of introduction for what's before us today, before, and introduce our honoree. So.
Great. I am Kate McCann, and I'm a math teacher at U32 High School. Coincidentally, I am also the statewide coordinator for the math portion of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. The awards were established by Congress in 1983. The president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. Awards are given to science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teachers from each of the 50 states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, the Department of Defense Education Activity Schools, or the US Territories. the Department of Defense Education Activity Schools, or the US Territories as a group. The award recognizes those teachers have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. Since the program's inception, more than five thousand two hundred teachers have been recognized for their contributions in the classroom and to their profession. Awardees reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's teaching corps, and they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teachers on student achievement. The National Science Foundation administers PAMST on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. And this year, Vermont's finalist is from White River Valley Middle School and is Mindy Womet.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that, Kate. So, so Mindy, welcome, uh, to the State Board of Education. And again, uh, sincere apologies to, to both of you for, uh, our, our delay. But as you could probably tell, uh, and I, uh, we had, um, a rather spirited, uh, and, and complex discussion that needed some additional time. So appreciate your, your patience. So Mindy, um, I, I, it'd be great for the board if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and, um, and then I, I want to open up to the board for, for questions and, and comments.
Hi, um, thank you for having me. Um, I am Mindy Womet, and I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at White River Valley Middle School. This is my nineteenth year teaching, and I've had a focus in math my whole career. Um, I started as a fifth and sixth grade teacher at the South Royalton Elementary School, and then moved up to their middle school. And then through the merger, uh, between South Royalton and Bethel, we became White River Valley Middle School. So I stayed on board, and, um, I came right after graduation to this community from UVM. So Vermont's pretty true to my heart. I was born here, so I'm a native Vermonter. And I live in South Royalton, so my two children are in the school system where I teach at. Um, so my community school is really important to me, and, um, I've loved teaching math my whole career. I, my philosophy has always, like, really boiled down to, my goal is, I just want kids to not hate math. And anything above that is a super bonus. So we, I like to focus on attitudes and just not having it be a scary thing for a lot of students. So, um, I had a colleague who was a former PAMST awardee and has served on the panel a number of years, who encouraged me to apply. And, um, I've known a few, um, friends who have been involved in the awardee program. And so I did it more as a reflection process. I know a lot of people do board certification for that. Really deep, personal reflection, and I really found the whole process really rewarding, that I had to answer a lot of questions and really think about my, myself as an educator and my heart and my soul. And just the whole process was really awesome. And so I'm really honored to be recognized, but it also feels really weird because I know for every one awardee, there's hundreds of teachers that are just as awesome, if not better, and as deserving. So I kind of, I just take it as a thanks for recognizing teachers for what we do, especially during the last three years. So it's, it's just nice to have a positive light in this situation.
Great. Thank you so much, uh, Mindy. Um, questions, comments from the board? Uh, Patrick, and then Tom?
So mine is not a question but a comment. Board member Patrick Brown here, Mindy, and I just want to say big congratulations to you. And, um, so good to see your face, and I hope you can rest on your laurels. And I hope you have a big accompanying check with this award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, Mindy, congratulations and, uh, special kudos to winning this, um, award during these challenging, um, years. As a teacher myself, I know what it's been up against and, um, and especially as a math teacher, um, middle school math teacher. So you've been up against it. I'm really interested in, um, anything that you discovered in this reflection process that you said got at the heart, um, of your teaching. Because as one of the best in the business, I think it would be good for all of us to hear, um, what is that, what did you find is at the heart of your teaching? What was a major discovery in the reflection process?
Good question. I, there was a lot of questions on asking, like, what you do to prove certain things, and then you had to say, like, why you did it. And especially, you know, after nineteen years, so much of what I do, like, comes automatically. And to have to stop and intentionally think, like, okay, I do that automatically. Why is that so automatic? And why are there things that I stopped doing versus things that I continue doing? And it all, it boiled down to, like, what's, what's good for the, the spirit of the child? And not necessarily just about the math content and what is good for their mental health. And if, like, if they are able to be a learner, then they can learn. And so changing my assessment practices over the years to make it not daunting and not feel like a test, but just a, like, an exhibition of learning, it's like a fancy term, but really, I tell them, I just need you to show me what you know today. So that, take the pressure off of them, and that I always just want to build them up. And so the practices that I do around assessment or for, you know, the, like, formal testing or just activities, making sure I'm making learning relevant for them and being honest. And there are certain things that we'll have to do, like, I, I've never seen this before. Um, let's learn together. That it's not about me. And a lot of things that a lot of educators do naturally, but I had to put it on paper. And then it's like a contract with yourself that this is what I'm saying, and I really believe it.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions from other board members? Lyle?
What I just heard, Mindy, you say is that you are a reflective teacher and that you take great time and great care in thinking about what just happened. And I love hearing that. Um, so thank you for everything you're doing. I was gonna say the exact same thing Tom did, which is, and thank you for doing it through COVID. Um, the fact that you had to pivot every single day, um, was amazing. So keep doing what you're doing, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure that everyone who has a child in your class appreciates your work.
Thank you.
Uh, Kim?
Just thank you so much. What, um, exudes from your sharing with us is your deep caring for your students and really authentic relationship building that I bet made transcending the challenges of remote learning easier for you and those kids. I mean, there's nothing easy about it for anybody, but when, when people feel connected, we sit here and do hard things and look at each other on a screen, and we still sit here and do hard things. Um, and I, I just, I bet parents, but also I bet students find your, um, being a learner with them to be pretty transformational in how they view their learning and who they are as learners. And so just thank you. It makes you want to be a student in your class.
Thanks.
I did happen to like math in middle school, so, but either way, I'm pretty sure it would have been awesome. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Kim. Uh, Professor Colby?
I'll just jump on, jump in with all the thank yous and all of that. But I, I, I do want to make a particular thank you to you, uh, for teaching the middle grades, right? That especially math teachers, highly competent math teachers have lots of choices they can make. And middle grade science, technology, and engineering and mathematics instruction is so important. And to have really good math instruction in the middle grades is just so critical, important. And so what, what a privilege it is to have someone with your talent who's made a decision to sort of dedicate their career to, uh, middle grade education is just remarkable. And I want to thank you, in addition to all the other great things you do, for making that choice every day. And, um, a good shout out to the UVM grads, right? UVM teacher. Excellent.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tammy. Uh, Jenna, I saw you had your hand up before, and then it came down? Nope, okay.
No, it's, uh, I don't know what I did. And I'll just jump in anyways. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you do do for your school, your community, and, um, I think it's great that you have your kids at the school that you get to work at every day. And I think that when your heart is in your community and you get to, um, serve your friends and neighbors, it's, it's different. It has a whole different feel. So thanks for working in your community that you live in.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, um, I, I did put together, uh, a, a resolution, uh, for the board to, um, uh, to consider. So I'll, I'll read through the resolution and would, uh, invite a, a member of the board to, um, to move adoption of, of the following resolution. So this is a, a resolution celebrating Mindy Womet of White River Valley Middle School as a twenty twenty-two Vermont finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Whereas, Mindy Womet is an outstanding teacher of sixth through eighth grade math at White River Valley Middle School in Bethel. Whereas, she is a graduate of the Vermont Mathematics Initiative with a Master's of Education Curriculum and Instruction. Whereas, her success in the classroom has proved to be an invaluable resource in her role as a multi-year presenter for, for middle grades collaborative. Whereas, she played a vital leadership role in merging the former South Royalton School and the Whitcomb School following Act forty-six. Whereas, Mindy is described by her peers as, quote, "the mentor we all need to support our digital dreams in our classrooms." And whereas, Mindy has been selected as a twenty twenty-two Vermont finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, a prestigious award that recognizes her contributions as a teacher of math, of mathematics in Vermont. Now therefore be it resolved by the Vermont State Board of Education that Mindy Womet be acknowledged, recognized, and honored for her exemplary career as a public school mathematics teacher. And be it further resolved that the State Board of Education celebrates the recent accomplishments of this amazing teacher and offers its best wishes for her continued success. So, uh, Patrick, is that a, are you moving that? Oh, you're on mute. You're still on mute. Uh-oh. Nope, you're still on mute, Patrick. Sick. Ah, there you go. So moved. Okay, so moved. Is there a second? It's been seconded by, uh, Tom Lovett. Is there any, uh, discussion? Alrighty, all those in favor of adopting, uh, the resolution as presented, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And, uh, all those opposed and abstentions, hearing none, I declare, uh, the resolution adopted unanimously. So again, uh, Mindy, congratulations and, and thank you, uh, for spending time with us today. And again, apologies for, for the delay. And I also want to thank you, Kate, uh, for bringing this, um, to the board and, um, would certainly love to, uh, to make this, uh, an annual, a recurring, um, uh, feature of, of our board in the future. So please, um, make sure that your organization keeps us posted.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. I know you have a busy schedule.
Yes. Thank you. Alrighty, good luck. Best wishes.
Very much.
Bye-bye. So, um, we're running a little bit behind schedule. I'm, I'm, we had on the agenda, uh, item K was an update on pupil weighting. Uh, that's not particularly time sensitive. So I'm gonna suggest, uh, absent objection, that we, uh, we put that off, uh, to a, a future meeting. And then item L, I don't know, uh, Mr. Secretary, if that needs to be addressed today or if you'd prefer to postpone that to a future meeting?
Yeah, I would prefer action today. I think it is, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, compared to the prior conversation and assessment. This one's, I think, would be pretty easy for the board.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, so we will now take up, uh, item L then, please. Uh, so, Mr. Secretary, uh, the floor is yours, uh, as well as that of your colleagues.
Yeah, I'm not sure to what extent we have staff available. I know there were some scheduling issues, but in your packet, um, you have a recommendation. This pertains to, um, the alternative assessment. Previously, the board had taken action on a change in contractor for, um, the broader state assessment. And this is a requirement in law that we also provide an assessment for those students who are unable to access, uh, the, uh, main assessment. And that's what we call the alternative assessment. Uh, so we went out to bid, um, and the, again, the agenda packet item, uh, explained some of that process and the rationale and so forth. Uh, but we're recommending, uh, a contract with Cognia, which coincidentally is the, the vendor that we had, uh, recommended previously. And, you know, the major, uh, thing I think to highlight is the fiscal implications in the green sheet. Uh, this is at a significant lower cost, um, which is interesting to note. Significant stakeholder involvement was behind this decision-making process. Uh, so it's a, it's a very good platform, but the cost was significantly lower than what we're currently providing. So, um, that's, that's the recommendation in a nutshell.
Uh, board members, questions, comments? Okay. Uh, Tammy? Oh, and then Lyle?
Just a quick note that I had the opportunity to meet with, um, uh, representatives from the agency who were involved in the process. Um, and, uh, I can, it, it was a great conversation. It was, it was interesting to learn more about the alternative assessment. One of the things I did learn that I think is really interesting and important, um, is that this particular assessment platform that they're selecting comes with a suite of, um, additional professional development tools for, um, educators in the field, um, as well as, um, opportunities to better align programming with, um, and practices with the assessments, um, which I think is really hopeful and particularly given sort of our APR indicator three around gaps in performance with students with disabilities. That, to me, was particularly exciting, that this was more than just a move to a new assessment platform, but also there may be some opportunities here to leverage, um, the assessment platform for improvements in practice.
And Dan, I don't see a, um, anything on cost here. Is that something that I'm missing, or is that not in our purview?
Meaning the actual numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's not included, uh, to the extent it's in your purview or not. Um, I just want to call that out as a significant variable. I don't know if it's, um, it's not secret per se, but, uh, it was interesting to note, um, that, uh, you know, the, the product we're recommending here came in substantially lower than what we're currently providing. I want to, and I want to say in the order of like three hundred thousand dollars less than what we're, we're currently spending.
Thank you.
So unless there are any other questions, um, I would entertain a motion, uh, to, um, authorize the secretary, uh, on the board's behalf to award a three-year contract uh, with the possibility of two one-year extensions to develop and implement statewide summative assessments of ELA math and science for students with significant cognitive disabilities, AKA alternate assessments to Cognia pursuant with the requirements set forth in federal law, namely ESSA Section eleven eleven and IDEA, uh, Section three hundred dot one six oh, in preparation for administration beginning in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
So moved, what you said.
Alrighty, thank you. It's been moved, uh, by Lyle Jepson. Is there a second? Kim? That's a second from, uh, Kim Gleason. Is there any, uh, discussion? Uh, yes, Jennifer?
Just a quick question. Do we need to be concerned that, um, I think we just have it listed on the agenda as a discussion only?
It's, it's a fair question, um, but I'm gonna rule that it's, uh, it is appropriate. Our, our, this has come up in the past. We, we try to, uh, signal, um, whether or not we're gonna be having a vote on something, but our rules do not actually explicitly require, uh, that we do so, uh, in, in the agenda. And, uh, to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing in, in state law. As long as it's properly warned, I, I, I feel that we're on safe ground. But if anybody has a dis- But if anybody has a disagreeing opinion, I'd love to hear it. Yes, Kim?
I don't know that it's disagreeing because I'm not sure if it's a direct application. But I thought in practice, at least in school board work, we would need to have warned an action. But again, I don't know to what extent that directly applies. And maybe what we do is we take our vote and if we need to affirm it at the next meeting or do whatever, is that something we can do?
Um, so, so a couple of, so to answer your question, there's definitely no requirement for us to like warrant a vote in advance, like a meeting in advance, if that makes sense.
No, I meant in the agenda, actions for votes on which we are taking action in sort of school board world, the agenda would need to signify the potential action. But again, I don't know if that was our best practice or if that was law. And I wonder if Emily or anybody has.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to hear from Emily. My, my understanding is that is not a law. I think that's more the category of, of good practice that we tried out here too. I know I've looked in our rules before because this has come up before and there's nothing in our rules. I'm pretty sure there's nothing in law. But Emily, do you want to, if you're with us, if you want to chime in on that point?
You're exactly right, Oliver. It's a practice that the board has observed and it's not codified and your rules are in the open meeting law.
Okay. Awesome. Tammy?
I guess I'll just ask a question as Secretary French. Are you looking for a vote for us? Or was this just something that you wanted to inform us about and have some discussion? To have some assurances around, I, you know, I guess my question is, is do you need to vote from us?
Yes, I appreciate the offer and yes, we do, consistent with your rule. And I would say to the point of the public's interest, you know, if the public were reading through the agenda packet, they would see the green sheet formulated as a recommendation, albeit the agenda itself doesn't have it listed as an action item. The green sheet points to a recommendation and an action coming.
Okay. So it's been moved and Kim, I believe you seconded it, but keep me honest. Okay. And oh yeah, we got to discussion. Any other discussion? All righty. So all those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Are there any abstentions? Okay, not hearing any. It appears that the motion is carried unanimously and the motion has carried unanimously. So, Mr. Secretary, go forth and assess. So, uh, that, we're now back on time. That brings us to item M. So Kim and Tammy, if you want to provide us with an update on your EQS committee?
We didn't, I don't know if Tammy and I like shot fingers forward or drew straws, but I'm happy to either start, Tammy, and you can hop in or you can start. Okay. Okay, great. And we met last Friday with our, our committee. And we thought importantly that we sort of arrive at a common agreement regarding our charge. And I've shared that with you all and I apologize that went out very late last night. I had to pull it off of my notes document and realized we hadn't shared it with you all directly. It's our agreement among ourselves to suggest that pursuant to, you know, our Title 16, Chapter 3, we are, we are charged with making regulation. And, and that authorizes us. And as we look at the body of work, we're going to bucket that body of work in response to the compliance with Act 1. And there, we believe there to be other recommendations that are likely to come from the area or others regarding policy coherence or alignment with a server for that or other matters. And then we understand that there may be other pieces out there around district quality standards that become part of this work that is perhaps to be determined. And we are going to review the work in the legal, the framework, with the relevant legal framework, looking at those inputs and ensure that we are seeking substantive stakeholder input. And so we, you all have that. I don't know if, if you have questions about that. And then we have a draft work plan too, and I'm happy to speak to that as well. And Tammy, please hop in with whatever else or, or Tom or Gabrielle as well. And Patrick will be joining us. He was unavailable for that meeting.
I think the only other thing I would point out is we did have a lengthy discussion around norms for how we were going to go forward with this work and the kinds of conversations that, I guess, the, the kinds of conversations that were going to be supported and not supported in the context of our work around those norms. And those are included on that document as well. And so really, our group felt that it was very important that we set some guardrails around making sure that we have respectful discourse around sort of the issues that may come before the committee and, and may come up in the process of revising these rules. So I just want to point out that there were, there were three parts to our discussion at our subcommittee meeting. Obviously the substance of the work, but also some discussion around process, particularly with respect to norms and respect for differences in opinion and et cetera.
And I apologize, Tammy, I don't think I put our, our norms body because we were sharing them from Tammy's classroom work and it still had reference to class and student on it. And then I realized they're support, they're.
They're all students.
I know. They are norms for our respectful work together. And I am happy to sort of correct our language and share that with everybody. But it was, the general sentiment was what our, our committee discussed and the way we will work together and with, with those attending our meetings. And we will also, we, I had drafted just an introductory set of comments that will, it's, you know, a couple of sentences that we'll read at the beginning of every meeting to anticipate that we may have lots of people joining us. We may not, but we might for public comment. And we want to be mindful of the amount of people wishing to speak, the amount of time, and set the stage for respectful comment and that it is not a time for dialogue, but rather to take in comment and have, have that potentially inform future agenda and body of work. So that was another piece that we spoke about. And then the draft work plan is, is draft because we realize there may be other parts at play and timelines that may have shifted in, in legislation as the session was closing. But our anticipation was, and our hope is that we would have a full draft for the board to consider in November, discuss, propose. And we'll be keeping you updated between now and then. At the December meeting, we may be poised to be able to vote or January. We backed out of this from a timeline that we thought was consistent with what is in, I think it's either been signed until ours about to be directing the agency to do a process that addresses the district quality standards. So we tried to align that this collective body of work would go to Icar at the same time. So our target for Icar was February and backed into our timeline with this. What we anticipate is two meetings a month, about 90 minutes apiece. And that May through August, we'll look at the relevant framework, legal framework. We'd asked the Act 1 group to do a side-by-side for us so that where they're making changes, we can see either their thinking or their source documents. And that will help us to be able to work for things, through things such as like definitions. If we understand where that has come from and what caused it to arrive at where it was in the definition, we don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel, but we want to be able to ask questions of that. We expect that we'll be inviting folks in to join us in our meetings as we are taking up, in our agenda planning, taking up topics that we think are of particular importance to have very specific voice join us. Of course, all these meetings will be warned in public. People can join us at any time. And then we think in September, we'll be poised to have a draft, draft, a pretty drafty draft, but a draft that might, that will lend itself to having one or two public hearings that are simply for us as a committee to listen, that aren't part of the formal process, but help inform people's initial reactions to this body of work. And then from that, we would spend October considering what we're hearing. And again, hope to have to the board a draft for consideration and, and, you know, your deeper questions at that point. And Tammy, I'm sure I missed stuff.
It's going to be a busy summer. Join us for all the fun.
And we did ask Emily to offer us the, the, you know, what she views as the legal framework. So we have a couple of asks out that we hope in the next month or so, we'll have some feedback for that that will inform our work.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'll plan to just have a standing agenda item for your committee to, to have updates, so.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from board members? Nope. Okay. I think then that takes us to item N, which is, I don't think we have any other members of the public. I think they've all left, but Maureen or Suzanne, if, if you see anyone, please let us know. But if there are any members of the public, we would certainly entertain comments. But I don't believe we have anybody with us. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless you want to stick around. Jennifer?
I move.
Okay, Jennifer Samuelson has moved to adjournment. Is there a second? It's been seconded by.
I'll second that.
By Tammy Colby. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, those opposed, say no and raise your hand. Therefore, the, the motion is carried unanimously and we stand in adjournment. Until next time, thank you all for your perseverance through a, a, a very spirited discussion today. So.
Thank you.
Until next time. Cheers.
Have a good day.